Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the Palm Springs Joint City Council Measure J Commission Study Session of June 8, 2022 to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I invite everyone who can stand and would like to to stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. City Clerk, could we get the roll call?
Commissioner Futterer.
President.
Commissioner Gazzan.
Here.
Commissioner Craig.
Here.
Commissioner Marshall.
Here.
Commissioner Robin.
Yes.
Vice Chair Soto.
Here, virtually.
Chair Bernstein.
Here.
Councilmember Holstich.
Here.
Councilmember Coors.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
President.
Mayor Pro Tim Garner.
Here.
Mayor Middleton.
President.
All are present.
This time, time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. City Clerk, do we have any registered speakers?
We have Kevin Corcoran, followed by Ron Willison and Ginny Foat.
Good afternoon, all. My name is Kevin Corcoran. I'm the co-chair of the Palm Springs Plaza Theater Foundation. First of all, I want to thank the Measure J Commission and also the city staff for recommending the city invest $2 million towards the restoration of the Plaza Theater. We appreciate the support and the recognition of the importance of this project, and I think the impact its completion will have, not only on downtown, but also our city. Our board has worked very hard with city staff, commissioners, and other key constituents, and many people have asked us, why this project and why now? First of all, the Plaza is a city-owned asset, and the theater board will raise, our board will raise over 80% of what it's going to take to completely restore this theater from sources both private and perhaps some additional public sources. So we share this stewardship for this property, both the board and, I think, the city. The investment of $2 million now, however, will not only bring our current number up to 9.5 million out of the 12 we need to build this or to restore this, but we think it'll send an important signal that our goal is within reach. Remember, a year ago, this project was completely off. There was no hope of getting this, and now we're potentially 9.5 close to our target of 12 million. We think that the city's support now will help to motivate large and small donors, corporations, and others to help us reach the finish line. We're confident that our fundraising efforts as a result of this now will help us to raise all this money by the end of the year, so we can start to actually build or construct and do the restoration in early 2023. We're working hard with staff right now to, in the bidding process, for qualified architects, preservation consultants, historic theater specialists, and a contractor to move forward with these restoration plans. Our goal is to start construction in the first quarter of 2023, and we anticipate it'll take about a year to complete the restoration of this theater. Now, when many of the citizens passed Measure J, there was a promise of a new Palm Springs, a commitment to sales tax dollars to bring back the glory of our town. This project, we think, is the last piece, the last piece in restoring downtown. And if you would, imagine spring of 2023, when this thing is open, we're going to have lectures, film festivals, programs for youth, community services, ability for nonprofits to do fundraisers, all of that will be made possible. And it's realistically, our ability to do this is realistic for early spring of 2024. So we think that this is an investment that will add value across all the districts, and we know, working closely with staff and with city leadership, we can make this happen. And with your support today, we will make this happen. So thanks for your consideration. I'll stick around if you have other questions, but we really look forward to making this a wonderful opportunity for the city, and we appreciate everybody's support in making it happen. Thank you all.
Ron Willison, followed by Ginny Foat.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. My name is Ron Willison. I produce Palm Springs Speaks in conjunction with the Palm Springs Public Library and the Friends of the Palm Springs Library and the Palm Springs Cultural Center. And we are very interested in using the Plaza Theater as a future venue for our speaker series. I don't know if you're some of aware of the speakers we've had in the past, but we featured Jane Fonda, Deepak Chopra, Bob Woodward on March 8th, which was pretty prophetic since we stopped. So we were one of the lucky ones that didn't have to cancel anything. But we've also spent a lot of time, and I spent 12 years on the library board and as president of the board, helping to restore the Wellwood Murray. We'd love to be able to bring that conjunction together with the two and be able to hold our sponsor and pre-receptions at the Wellwood Murray Library in the patio and the reception area there, and then have the ability to use the theater, because we are very lucky and able to use the Palm Springs High School through the generosity of Mr. Mississippi Supple in the school district. But unfortunately, we're limited there on dates and also on the fact that we can't serve alcohol, and alcohol always helps sponsor donations. So we think that that would be an excellent conjunction also, as well as show off a building that we spent a lot of time and effort trying to restore the Wellwood, and hopefully the same thing with the Plaza. I do remember in 1991, 92, when we were doing the film festival there for the first few years, it was amazing to see that theater full of people, particularly for things like Strictly Ballroom and Cinemaperdiza, where they were crazy. And we really had a lot of fun using that theater. It's a beautiful location, and I really hope that we could partner on that. We want to restart our season here in January. We've already started our fundraising efforts and have feelers out to several speakers, and this speaker series is really meant to feature larger speakers. We need a larger venue than the 500 seats at the cultural center. We need the 800 to 1,000 seats to make it a profitable enterprise, and also to get the type of speakers we want. If we want Michelle Obama or Dolly Parton or anyone like that, we need a large venue. And I'm not saying we're going to get either one of those, but I just thought the biggest names that I, we would, you know, we came very close at one point of getting Hillary Clinton, but that would have been in April, so that didn't happen. But again, we really would love to be able to partner with you. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. It's a beautiful theater, and it's a great opportunity to do something fabulous for the city. Thank you.
Ginny Foat.
Thank you. I just want to start by thanking Mayor Middleton for her kind words about my counsel, the 13, 14 years I spent on counsel. But I think one of the most important things that I recognized as a council member was the budget is the most important thing that you'll ever vote on, because it's the future of the city. And I was on the council when there was very little money, and we decided to spend money because that was the future of the city. We created the hotel program, the hotel renovation program. We also created Measure J with a wonderful vote from the citizens. And so I want to thank the Measure J Commission today for the things that, all the time they took to make these recommendations, and they're some wonderful recommendations for you to consider. But there's three in particular I just wanted to talk about, and one is the animal shelter shade structure, because that is so important for us. In the summertime, it's really important that people going to adopt animals get to meet with the animals. If they have another dog or pet in their home that they want to bring to introduce to see how they get along, they need those get acquainted structures that we have. We have two in the front, and we have several in the back, but we need those, we need that shade so that they, the pets, both the animals and the citizens can go out. We have a wonderful record of doing adoptions. I also want to say for the Mizell Senior Center, which I have a great association with, you've got to approve that kitchen. We've served so many people meals every day from that center. And then finally, for the theater, because the theater is going to be an absolute wonderful thing for the city, not only culturally, but for also the nonprofit organizations. We've already been in talks to have some sort of a joint fundraiser at the theater. So I encourage you to approve the spending in all three of those. Thank you.
Daniel Rossi, you have, you're live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin.
Thank you. I'm Dan Rossi. I'm the executive director of the Palm Springs Animal Shelter, and I'm here to talk about our support for the Measure J support of the Plaza Theater. It would be very important to us to be able to have the ability to have a partnership where we could have events, have adoption events, be able to bring the animals to central downtown area for adoption, for awareness and education opportunities. I think, as you all know, to find private venues that can support our mission that would be so centrally located, first of all, is very limited, and then when you do find it, it's very expensive for nonprofits. So to be able to have a partnership with the Plaza, actually be able to do some of our events down there in a state-of-the-art theater where we can highlight our mission, highlight the animals that we're trying to adopt out, would really help move our mission forward as well. We also have grand plans to really expand our education opportunities to the public as well, related to our mission about taking care of animals in our community in ways the public can help. So to have a venue that would have state-of-the-art presentation systems to be able to do that would be amazing as well. So we are full, full support of this support of the Plaza and would love to be able to have that place up and running so we could partner with them as well. Also, want to just briefly say thank you for also considering our shade structures at the shelter as well. Thank you.
Candace Spann, you're live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. You may begin.
Hello?
Yes, you may begin.
Oh, hello. Good afternoon. My name is Candace Spann. I am born, I was raised and born in Palm Springs, and I'm fortunate enough to be living in this city now that I am older. I am requesting today for shade structures over Ruth Hardy and Victoria Park playgrounds, in addition to a splash pad at Ruth Hardy. My parents took my brother and I to Ruth Hardy all throughout my childhood, and I remember them complaining about no shade when we were kids. And now that I am a parent, I am saying the same thing and hiding by trees. Vacation rentals are a huge part of the valley, and I go to Ruth Hardy every weekend, and I hear the same complaints from residents and non-residents. So please accept my request for shade structures over the playgrounds at Ruth Hardy and Victoria Park, in addition to a splash pad at Ruth Hardy. We will appeal more to families throughout the year for vacation rentals and less for parties. So thank you very much for your time.
Kathy Warmick. Kathy Warmick, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Mayor Middleton and honorable members of the city council, Chair Bernstein and honorable members of the Measure J Commission. My name is Kathy Warmick, and I'm here today to just talk about a few of the items that are of special interest to me that are before you today. I wanted to thank staff in particular for the inclusion of the $10 million, which would be transferred to the Affordable Housing Fund. This city needs more affordable housing. We need family housing. We need workforce housing, and we need subsidies for new-built, single-family housing so that it's affordable to some of our residents. I urge you to approve that $10 million transfer. I also wanted to thank staff for the inclusion of a long-term planner in the same budget. That planner would be incredibly helpful to planning staff for the many tasks that they have ahead of them for the next coming years. Also, I wanted to thank both staff and the Measure J Commission for the inclusion of the main library renovations and the fray building, which would be an adjunct to the library. I was on the library board when we finished the Wellwood Library, finished the funding for the Wellwood Library, and also did some of the planning for the fray building and did what has been the third in the last 20 years of an attempt to modernize the library. That building really needs improvements. It doesn't function well, and it needs a complete renovation. I just wanted to put these items in consideration before you today, and thank you very much for this opportunity to speak.
Haley Preston, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the city council, mayor, and commissioners. My name is Haley Preston, and I am the director of Desert Compost. It's a Coachella Valley-based nonprofit program of the California Alliance for Community Composting. The city manager, Justin Clifton, asked me to speak with you today about our proposal and request for funding in this year's fiscal budget. And we know that SB 1383 is a big concern, and we have been for the last year, the boots on the ground, your volunteers doing the work in the community, advocating citizens on the value of composting and why it's essential for the climate, for the repair of the climate crisis. We've been doing the work. We talked to HOAs. We've been working with businesses, organizations, students, space groups. We get it. There's a lot of educational work that needs to be done, and because we have our finger on that pulse, we also have a lot to give. And so we're asking for very little in return, and we've done so much work already. So we're hoping that you can see us as your partners in this, in getting SB 1383 and following and complying with that. We ask you to consider the education activities of Desert Compost as part of your funds for this year, funding your local community compost to do the much-needed work of educating our citizens. So we're here for you. We're here for the community, and we're excited to see what's next. And we want to ensure the success of composting on all of the levels that it needs to happen, both in the homes, in the community, and on the industrial rollout of the programs. So we're here to support all of that going well, and I thank you for your time and your
Mara Gladstone, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. I'm Mara Gladstone, a 10-year resident of Palm Springs, a homeowner and a parent of two children who are born there. I'm asking the city to allocate excess funds to update the playgrounds in our parks with inclusive, accessible, shade-abundant, and well-designed 21st century playgrounds for our youth. If you have children, you know how much energy they have and how important play is for physical and mental childhood development. You may also know that more than 80% of kids in the Unified School District of Palm Springs qualify for free meals. Childhood obesity continues to be a problem. Yet the city has not actively invested in young citizens here with beautiful play spaces where kids and families can comfortably gather, especially in the summer when play options here are so limited. Please be advocates for populations here who live here year-round, who may not have the ability, time, or political representation to advocate for their needs. That the city is allocating $100,000 yearly to a pickleball court attendant indefinitely and regularly updates our dog park suggests that new playgrounds in every park in this city with shaded areas and water play should not be out of reach for all of us here. I guarantee they will rebuild, will be used. So thank you very much for considering this as you look at your budget surplus.
Catherine Hatch, you're live with the city council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
My name is Catherine Hatch. I have three sons, and I'm a fairly new resident here. I was a social worker up until I quit working to raise my kids full-time. My family and I recently moved here from Brooklyn. Sorry, there's a bit of an echo. The way a city maintains and presents its playgrounds says a lot about how a city values its families, community, and next generation. Palm Springs has neglected to allocate appropriate funding to its playgrounds. Our playgrounds are outdated. We have had the same play structures we've had for over 30 years. They're unusable in the higher temperatures, and these temperatures are only rising. You might as well rope them off as they are so hot to touch. In the summer, it could burn a child. There's very limited shade and no water features in any of the Palm Springs parks, excuse me, playgrounds. The bathrooms are filthy. The bathrooms are filthy. Families avoid them at all costs. They are dangerous and unsanitary. I took my sons to the Sunrise Park recently, and I'm glad no one had to use the bathroom because there were a group of men washing their clothes and using drugs in them. I routinely find youth condoms in the playground closest to my home, Ruth Hardy. Playground, play structures, and their immediate surroundings are for children and families. Many cities such as Brooklyn have passed measures making it so that only adults accompanied by children are permitted on or within a certain distance of play structures. Even in the housing projects where I used to do home visits as a social worker in Brooklyn and the Bronx, I never saw New York allow the kind of activity Palm Springs seems to tolerate so close to where its children's play. It is common knowledge among parents that you have to go to Rancho Mirage, Cathedral City, or Palm Desert to access cleaner playgrounds with reliable shade, clean bathrooms, and updated play structures filled with materials that don't get so hot in the summer. Why is it that other desert cities spend so much more on their playgrounds in spite of having less money and fewer families? The families of Palm Springs live here year-round. Most people cannot afford to flee the city in the heat or even drive down valley to access better playgrounds. Going to invest in our playground tells the children here they are an afterthought. It tells us residents and the many visitors from around the world that Palm Springs is only a nice playground for adults. Let's change that and invest in our playgrounds and provide Palm Springs kids and family with modern, shaded, clean, and safe playgrounds with water features. That's all I have to say.
Abby Winston, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Thank you. Hello. My comments are directed towards the capital plan, but in fact, this principle could apply to everything Palm Springs does and considers doing. I spoke to the City Manager at a neighborhood meeting last month. I thanked him and the staff for including sustainability as a priority in the planning, but asked him specifically how the city intended to implement this sustainability. He gave me all the talking points that everybody says, and commitment, and sustainability, and he wrapped it all up in a "you can't change what you don't measure." Well, I'm here again in front of you to say, after looking at the capital plan, I don't see anywhere where you've provided any means to measure the carbon costs for any plan that you've made this year or into the future. It's not the city staff's fault that they haven't done what they don't know how to do, but it is past time for us to commit resources to our promises. There are many carbon pricing approaches that businesses and forward-thinking communities are using today and to their benefit to ensure the decisions taken into, take into account the cost of increasing or not reducing greenhouse gases in our atmosphere along with other financial costs when budgeting, to name a few: carbon fees, shadow pricing, implicit carbon pricing. I've sent you all a paper published in 2017 by the Center of Climate and Energy Solutions that is still being used today and that discusses in detail these and other ways to measure the cost of continuing to ignore the buildup of greenhouse gases. I'm imploring you now to budget for and direct the staff to implement a way to cost these serious costs into the budget immediately. It's time for all of us to put our money where our mouths have been and to walk the talk that we've all been talking. So I would greatly appreciate it if this year was the year that you maybe hired a consultant to teach the staff how to use carbon pricing to make good decisions for all of us. Appreciate the time and good luck. Thank you.
Scott Nevens, you're live with the City Council. You have two minutes to provide your comments, and you may begin.
Good afternoon, Mayor Middleton, City Council, and members of the Measure J Commission. My name is Scott Nevens. I'm a resident in District 1. I know that you guys have a lot of important items before you, so I just wanted to call today to show some public support for the funds that were requested for a shade structure for the beautiful Palm Springs Animal Shelter. The shelter admittedly holds a very special place in my heart as my husband and I adopted our dog Wi-Fi there, and it was one of the greatest decisions we've ever made and has had such positive effects on our lives. And when I was looking through this, I saw that the funds would be used for a section where animals can go to meet possible new owners or possible new owners with their pets. And unfortunately, as it stands now, this space in question is unusable for almost half of the year due to safety and comfort reasons for the animals. And that really got me thinking. What really means is that it has ripple effects, as this can hinder the shelter's ability to combat the issue of overcrowding. So with these funds, a shade structure can easily be built on the area, giving it a year-round purpose and usage, and giving these animals a much better shot at finding a loving family and new home. So please give them the allocated money and let's support our beautiful animal shelter. Thank you so much.
Madam Mayor, that concludes our list.
Thank you, and thank you to everyone in the public who came forward. We have a tremendous amount of material to cover today, and we are going to take the time it takes to go through all of it and make sure that we're all on the same page. Today is a study session. It is not a time that we make final decisions. Any recommendations, decisions that we generate today will have to be confirmed in our regular agenda, which will be coming up for further discussion on June 16 and June 30. And it is a pleasure to welcome back the Measure J Commission to these chambers. It's been too long since we've had the opportunity to meet with you, and we thank you in advance for everything you have already done and what you are going to do during the course of the day today. With that, the City Manager is going to get us started. I know he has a lot to cover, and Justin, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could get the PowerPoint queued up, thank you. So I'm just going to set the stage for where we're at in the budget process and what to expect for the remainder of the study session. So, let's see, that's not it. I'm sorry, can I get the other PowerPoint? There we go. So as you know, we've held two study sessions prior to today where we've introduced all of the major funds: the General Fund, Capital, and Airport. We received a lot of input and feedback and direction from council, and now we are here for our third study session, anticipating that we have two meetings after today to resolve any remaining outstanding items for the budget. That's June 16, where that's also a regular session, so this will be an agenda item, but we won't have quite as much time to focus on the budget strictly, but that will be a follow-up to any direction that we receive today, especially questions that remain unanswered. And then we anticipate having the public hearing and final budget adoption on the 30th. That's obligated to be passed by June, oh, sorry, July 1st. So we're just really at the last possible day to do that with that regularly scheduled meeting. So the goal today is really to follow up on direction we've received from council already and look between the General Fund, Capital Fund, and Airport, and really make decisions, as many as possible, about what is in the budget, what is out, and what needs further discussion. We do have a lot to cover today, especially as we'll kick things off in a second with Measure J, so I would encourage council to think about throughout the conversation, possibly if we're having elaborate conversations, it might be an indication that an item is most appropriate for follow-up, that it needs further discussion. As many things as we can resolve today that are in the budget or out of the budget will just help us work towards that June 30 date, when we want to have as much of that clarified as possible. But important to note that we really don't have to have perfect clarity. In fact, if we'd made not one additional decision beyond what we have today, we still have the vast majority of the budget established with our base level of programming, and we can amend the budget throughout the year. So any things that we don't resolve, it really is okay to defer those items into the current, oh, sorry, the next fiscal year. So again, goal's going to be to make as many decisions as possible, what's in, what's out, and what needs further discussion. Now, for today, we have a handful of categories that we would like to address. First, we are scheduled with the Measure J Commission so that the Commission can help council to understand its recommendations, which are largely capital projects for use of Measure J funding. I think the goal there is really mostly to understand those recommendations, ask any questions, and make sure you have that information. Should council want to also weigh in on where you would like to ultimately see that Measure J money directed, you can do that at the conclusion of this portion of the conversation, or you can do that later as we're looking at the Capital Improvements Fund in a little more holistic way and with more context. Either one is okay. After that, we plan on looking at the airport because we think that's a relatively small fund and one where most of the money is allocated as we work with our airline partners, FAA compliance, and the like. And then we'll use the balance of our time to review really the General Fund and Capital Fund where most of the interesting expenditures live and where most of the more complicated decisions live. So that's it. Are there any questions thus far about where we're at in the budget process or the flow of conversation today?
Any questions from council, from Measure J Commission? All right.
If not, I think we're ready to get started with Measure J, so if we can have PSTV put up that PowerPoint, and I'll invite City Engineer Joel Montalvo to come up and set the stage for that conversation.
Joel, welcome.
Thank you for having me, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Joel Montalvo, City Engineer. I'll wait for the PowerPoint presentation. So throughout the year, staff and myself work with the Measure J Commission. We have our regular meetings. We discuss projects. Through the previous years, 2019, we had the pandemic, so we didn't follow the typical process. I think this meeting here is getting us back in line with our typical process. So we're going to talk today about the community-initiated projects, and then we're going to talk about the capital project recommendations, what staff recommends, and there are some differences between what the Measure J Commission recommends and staff recommends, so we'll go over those. So I'm going to first start off with the community-initiated projects. So on October 1, 2021, the Commission put out an application for individuals, citizens, neighborhood organizations to submit their application for Measure J funding for their community, for the community, the 1 million essentially that we typically have for community-initiated projects. In December, we received 59 applications. The Commission then proceeded to review them, rate them. On January 20, they met and talked about those projects, and they also met again in February 17 and March 17 to make recommendations. And then the following table, which I'll bring up shortly, will show those 14 recommendations. But what I want to do is I want to turn it over to Chair Bernstein to talk about the Measure J Commission, how they come up with their priorities, and elaborate a little bit more on what their work is.
Thank you, Joel. Thank you, Mayor Middleton, Mayor Prodom Garner, and council members, and thank you for the opportunity to submit the Measure J Oversight Commission recommendations for the 2022, '23 fiscal year. So just to clarify, the total available funds for Measure J programming for '22, '23 is $39 million, which includes approximately $20 million in estimated revenue and $19 million in reallocated unexpended funds from previous years. The Measure J Commission has reviewed the projects. It is making recommendations to align with its understood intent of the Measure J tax and how it is presented to the public. And I'll begin by addressing the community-initiated projects followed by the capital improvement projects. Historically, there was $1 million annually in community-initiated projects intended to cover smaller projects initiated by the public. For several years, these projects focused on neighborhood safety hotspots, put forward primarily by 1PS. For fiscal year 2020 to '21, '21 to '22, the community-initiated project funds were set aside but not spent. Assuming that City Council does not reverse those funds previously set aside and continues this for the '22, '23 fiscal year, there would be approximately $3 million in funds available for programming community-initiated projects. We based our recommendations on that. The call for applications was put out on October 1, 2021. There was a total of 59 applications received. Of those, staff removed 14 as ineligible for various reasons, such as they were sponsorship or grant requests or on tribal land. Now, the remaining projects, these are the 14 that are currently recommended as community-initiated projects. There are also eight which the Commission recommended come from the regular Measure J fund. There are nine which the Commission did not recommend for approval, but the remaining 29 fall into three categories: approximately 20 parks and recreation projects, which the Measure J Commission would like the Parks Department and Commission to review and prioritize, as was done in past years. And the Measure J Commission has agreed on the importance of moving forward with these parks improvements. Then there are those which require further staff or applicant verification, and one that needs input from the public arts commissions. And those are in the staff report. The 14 community-initiated projects recommended for funding are as follows: the drainage system at the Boys and Girls Club, the shade structure over the playground at Victoria Park, new fencing between the community pool and pavilion, the repair of existing exercise equipment at Desert Highland, hiking trail maintenance and trailhead signage, shade structures at the animal shelter, Demuth Dog Park upgrades to address immediate needs, resurface the walking path at Desert Highland Park, the repair of Swim Center locker rooms, the Palm Canyon Theater maintenance repairs, the visitor center uplighting, and wellness centers at four schools and school gardens at four local schools. I should clarify that the total amount requested for the wellness centers and school gardens at the local schools is $180,000, not the $1,44,000 listed on the staff report. The balance of the project are expenses that will be covered by the school district, which Measure J has only asked for the initial setup. So the total for the 14 projects is $1,667,975. If the $3 million is approved, this would allow for the estimated $1.3 million for the projects needing Parks Department, Arts Commission, and other input verification. Last month, Measure J Commission reviewed year one of the five-year capital improvements projects, and on the following slides, you'll see three categories of projects. Can I go to the next slide? One are projects which came to the Commission as community-initiated projects, and the Commission has recommended be funded by regular Measure J funds. The second are projects which were initiated by engineering and which have Measure J concurs, and the third are projects where engineering and the Commission have different recommendations. The eight projects which came to the Commission as community-initiated projects include the following: $1 million for the Plaza Theater restoration, and I want to clarify that the Measure J Commission's recommendation was that these could be committed and set aside but not spent until it was clear that the remaining funds needed for the restoration were committed from other sources. $150,000 for the initial assessment design of pickleball, $150,000 for turf conversion at San Rafael, which was submitted by the Sustainability Department, $100,000 for Racket Club Road Diet, $600,000 for Victoria Park Pavilion in Orca Zibo, $100,000 for enhanced lighted crosswalks at Sonora and Farrell and Sonora and El Cielo, and $500,000 for renovation of the Mizell Senior Center kitchen. And I also want to note, the staff report indicated this originally as $1.3 million. That's the estimated for the total budget, and Mizell is asking Measure J to fund $500,000, or approximately one-third. There's also one project which was left off the list in the staff report, and that project is $199,735 for a commercial sewer line at the Palm Springs Cultural Center, a health and safety upgrade which will complete the second phase of a Phase III project to create two new versatile, modern performing arts theaters. And I do want to clarify that many of the community-initiated projects need to be checked by Engineering Department in terms of viability and cost estimate. Those are the community. For the use of the regular Measure J funds, I should mention there are certain projects which are obligations and multi-year projects. So the street repairs has been $3 million every year, and we have recommended that that go up to $6 million this year. There's also an airport reserve on aviation, fuel sales, debt service, and downtown property maintenance. The other projects which the Measure J Commission and Engineering agreed recommendations include the following expenditures for the next fiscal year: $950,000 for the Victorian Ruth Hardy Park restroom renovation, $750,000 for the fire tower training facility, $4.1 million for recreation field LED lighting upgrades, $650,000 for the Convention Center exhibit hall and Primrose Capitol carpet replacements, $100,000 for the Convention Center Jackie Lee Houston Plaza upgrades, $500,000 for the Palm Springs Convention Center retrofit lighting controls, and $500,000 for pedestrian master plan recommended projects. Both Engineering and Measure J recommended the following funds be set aside for future projects totaling $9.145 million. And this includes approximately $4.1 million for the main library renovation, $200,000 for Phase II of the keyless entry upgrade, $600,000 for the Demuth Dog Park ADA access, $900,000 for life safety improvements, $600,000 for backup generators at the city facilities... 900,000 for life safety improvements, 600,000 for backup generators at city facilities, 507,000 for city water treatment programs, 400,000 for the Sunrise Plaza HVAC improvements, 200,000 for Phase IV of the Onico Track Sewer, and 1.6 million set aside for the relocation of Fire Station 1. And I should also mention that some of these were previously approved in 2019 and also brought forward in 2021 but need to be approved by City Council this year. And the last category to discuss are those projects which regular Measure J funds presented by the Engineering Fund but which the Measure J Commission either recommends not to fund or fund at a reduced rate. And the first is the police-fire-city replacement radios. The Commission recommended $1 million of the estimated 3.5 million expenses come from Measure J. This project came to us last month, and the Commission would like staff to explore other options to share in the funding. The Commission does not recommend funding an engineering project manager. The Measure J Commission has historically steered away from using Measure J funds for staffing. We certainly agree that the engineering needs more staffing, but this is also a long-term recurring cost. And lastly, the Commission does not recommend the 400,000 for the roundabout Indian Canyon, South Palm Canyon, and Camino Paracilla. The Measure J did previously fund 100,000 for the initial design but has not reviewed it since. And that concludes the recommendations, which approximately are for $30 million for the next fiscal year. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yes, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. I really appreciate all of this. Can you just give a little bit more information about what the San Rafael turf conversion is and what the Racket Club Road Diet is?
Yeah, so the San Rafael came from the Sustainability Department in the city and basically is converting turf to desert landscaping, and they estimated 100,000 along the roadside.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. And the Racket Club Road Diet is where the curve turns into Farrell, and what they're trying to do is have a separated bike lane similar to that is on Farrell south of Ramon. And that came from the neighborhood organization.
I wanted to kind of jump in really quickly just to make the council aware that staff has not reviewed any single one of these projects. We have not done a thorough review for for engineering design, true cost estimates. We've taken applications. I think some of them, we've adjusted some of the pricing as we typically do for engineering, construction management. We generally use round numbers like 15 or 10%, but staff has truly not reviewed any single one of the projects to see if we can move them forward in the process to get to construction.
Joel, thank you, and please feel welcome to jump in at any time. Councilmember Coors.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the Commission for all of your work. Couple things. One, just when we get to actual discussion of specific projects, this club, community initiated projects, I need to abstain as Chair of the Board. So I think speaking to the city attorney, when we get to that, those specifics, we should do that one first or anything anyone else might have to abstain on. Couple questions. So number eight on the community initiated projects is the Demuth Dog Park upgrades to address immediate needs, $362,500. Just wanted to check with staff. I know we voted to match a state grant to actually do sort of the long-term Demuth Dog Park, and just what the timing is, right? If it's sooner, that money might be spent elsewhere. If we're talking two, three years, I see that, so.
So right now, I don't believe we have a true understanding of when we're going to be awarded that grant. From my understanding, my last understanding was that the grant was still in process, and we don't really know when we're actually receiving those funds. So it could be imminent, or it could be within one or two years.
Okay, so maybe, I don't know when the last time we checked, but it'd be good to have that follow-up before we, when we have to vote on these, because that would obviously change probably some of our opinions on what to do and when. On the Palm Canyon Theater maintenance repairs of $280,000, and I know they obviously, you know, had a tough time with being closed during the pandemic, but, you know, we didn't an RFP, we had two bids. You know, there were agreements regarding maintenance and who was paying for what, and so I don't think Measure J had that contract when they looked at this, and I inquired after I saw this. So I just want to make sure we're looking at what our agreement with them says regarding maintenance, because that impacted, there was definite negotiations regarding rent versus putting the money into maintenance funds, and, you know, that was probably at least, what, three years ago? I don't know if the mayor and Councilmember Holstich were on then when we did that, so yeah. But I don't think Mayor Protem and Councilmember Woods were on. So it'd just be good to know what that contract says, and I don't know if you've had a chance to review it.
No, again, we have not vetted any one of these applications to take it through the process. There's 14 of them, so we just decided we were going to move through the process. Measure J Commission was going to recommend moving forward. In the budget, what we have done for community initiated projects, we have essentially a round number that says the 1 million or the 3 million, but doesn't really specify which projects are going to be done with that. This is the list that we will then be vetting once we get the 1 million or 3 million. And if a project such as that one already has an agreement that would conflict with what's being requested, we would obviously flag that and not spend the money.
Okay, yeah, so I want to flag those both now for you, the public, and counsel and the Commission. And the other thing I also wanted to note and apologize because in going through my questions with the city manager, this one, I don't remember if I remembered this then or today, but when, you know, we were dealing with all the reductions in COVID, and we were talking about, I think, the downtown park, I think part of the motion, which I think I made, if I remember, was the next 3 million in revenue that we got in for the city would go to neighborhood parks. So I think that was the direction of council. It'd be good to check that and then where that money would have come from. But I think we, right, that was, that was our plan, and of course, in the middle of COVID, some of those things get lost, which I understand, but I do think that we voted on that. Right? So if we have, then we should factor that in for the budget next week in, as we look at capital improvements, because I think all five of us voted for that, that we wanted to see money come in. Obviously, more than 3 million came in since COVID, which is great to see, but I think we already took a position on that, and understandably, you know, we have different city manager and the folks who are working on that, all three of them no longer with the city, so I wanted to highlight that as well. So those are my questions and just brief comments for staff. Obviously, I have more as we go through. I presume we'll go through the specifics, projects at some point, right? Is that the plan, Mayor?
Yes.
So I'll save that for discussion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to follow up on Councilmember Coors's point, if you could let us know with the Dog Park state funding, if there are ways that either our lobbyists that the state retains can influence that or advocate for that money to come forward, or if there's work that the council members can personally do to reach out to find where that is in the hopper for the state, that would be really helpful, because that was a huge, huge win for our community to get those funds. And so much of the Dog Park problems is because of overuse at our one small dog park, and so to be able to do that is, is really important. I have some big picture questions if I can. I'm sorry, we're at little picture right now, proving a budget. But so the $1 million in community-funded projects, that's been the same allocation since the beginning of Measure J, right? Joel, I know you've staffed that commission for a long time.
I believe it was not at the very conception of Measure J, but it did evolve into a $1 million fund year after year, correct?
Thanks. I'm just wondering, because the amount of Measure J, the total amount, has grown so significantly. I think initially it was 9 million, or it was intended to be around there, and now we're seeing so many more dollars coming in. We're just thinking through, like, what proportion is going to community-funded projects, especially as we're hearing public comment about Parks and Rec and all of the needs, right? I know that it's hard to pick from, these are all really, really important projects, and there's so many more to fund, and then it seems like, you know, we're doing minimal amounts when we could really think broadly about how to invest these funds in the community. And then for staff-generated, so primarily nearly all of the Measure J funds are staff-generated recommendations, other than council and then the community driven through Measure J and our public process. So is there a way, I know, Joel, you've done an amazing, amazing job staffing that commission. Is there a way that other departments influence or add requests to get funded through Measure J, like Parks and Rec? Could you just detail that process?
Yeah, definitely, there is a process. We do invite other departments and other commissions to come forward to Measure J to ask for funding. In this budget, you will see certain, several of those situations where the Convention Center has come forward, the Fire Department has come forward, Parks and Rec is always at the forefront, has been coming forward, and they have projects that because of their recommendations, we're moving them through the process to get funded and then ultimately constructed.
So the department heads are responsible for submitting those requests, and then they're included at the staff level?
Correct. And we then determine, because we have, as the city manager pointed out at the beginning, there are multiple funding sources, so we end up looking at what funding sources apply to what particular project. If it's good for Measure J, or if it's a road project, we use Measure A or Gas Tax. So then we distribute, and the projects that are eligible for Measure J, we bring them forward to the commission.
Thank you, appreciate it. And for council, what I'm asking is, I think a lot about the use of Measure J and what we'll have to show for it by the end of it, and I think it's really important to show concrete items that we've added to our community. I know Measure J has, we've been working on that for years and years, and so I was just wondering, like, big picture, how we add those items, like a library or other things, and not just, a lot of the requests for Measure J are maintenance items that are keyless entry or HVAC, things that just aren't seen to the community that are in so dire need of help, but aren't visible, and so that's why I'm asking that. Thank you.
Councilmember Coors.
One other question, I just didn't mark it because I'm on the new handout. So in the main library renovations, it's if we receive the state grant, we'd set aside $4,138,000. What's the reason not setting it aside if we don't receive the state grant?
I don't see there is a reason not to set it aside. I would say the reason why we're asking for the funding is to match the dollars from the grant. If we do not get the grant, that would be the initial, you know, set aside, and then we can come back to the commission or to the council for more money.
Okay, no, I appreciate that, because unless we start setting aside that money, you know, as we're doing with the fire station and the recommendation as well, it's never going to happen, so I just want to support us doing the set aside regardless of the grant. And hopefully, we get the grant. That would be great, but I think we need to start setting the money aside, so thank you for that. That was all. Thank you.
If I can just add, we did previously have money set aside for the library for Measure J and right before COVID, and then it was pulled back, so we were working on that.
What was that amount? I'm sorry, I'm so sorry, Mayor.
1.5 million approximately.
Thank you. Sorry, Mayor.
Not at all. Are there any other questions, comments from council? Councilmember Woods.
Thank you. And we're, I think we're talking about the Measure J recommendations at this point of the meeting, is that correct? And can I get clarification on the 1.6 million that was set aside for the library and where that sits?
So for the library, we're...
Are you talking about the previously set aside?
Yes, yes.
So all of the Measure J funds when COVID hit were removed out back into the general fund. So, and then they put stuff back for the downtown park, and then that money has now come back to Measure J, and that's the $19 million that's carrying over. So that's why our budget, and so we're restarting with the whole allocation now. So we have 20 million for estimated for next year, and 19 million that's been carried over from previous years.
So I think the city manager was clarifying that the one, the money that was set aside for the library before didn't go to the general fund, it was put back into the Measure J fund, correct?
Put back into, I'm sorry.
Kept it within the Measure J fund.
It was put back into the Measure J fund, so we had set money aside of 1.6 million.
We had, before the pandemic, we were setting aside, I think there was a 1.6 million that was being set aside, right? And then when the pandemic hit, I think those funds were then removed, but I don't, I don't know the specifics. I think it did go back into the Measure J fund once we didn't. Okay, yeah, that's right. It went from being dedicated to a particular project to going to an unscheduled fund, so a pool of money.
So we would have to reschedule that 1.6 at this budget process?
Correct. This is the, yes.
Okay, but we're actually looking to schedule, I think, what, 4 million?
4.6, correct.
Yeah, okay. And would that include the 1.6 then?
I think for my purposes, the 1.6 doesn't exist anymore. It is, it's just we're now bringing to the council these new projects, because if we start getting into the conversation of before and after, it's going to get very difficult. These are the projects that we're bringing forward, staff recommendations with, with Measure J.
Right, okay, great. That makes it, you know, because during, during the pandemic, we were laying off staff and cutting programs and doing everything, and we didn't do any Measure J allocations whatsoever. Is that correct? At least on the community project side of things.
Correct.
Right, okay. So we didn't do that because we were at that point suffering from a potential deficit and laying people off.
Correct.
All right. So, but now we've seen that we've actually, the pandemic, we've generated some money, so we have some money now to spend, is what we're really looking at.
Yeah, essentially, yes. We now have the current revenues that are coming in. We now have the money for Measure J, and now we can actually start doing what we were doing in the past, in looking at projects, bringing them forward, and having council either approve them or not approve them.
So on the, on the community projects, there's winners, there's 14 winners, or recommended, recommended winners, let's say, and there are a lot of losers and a lot of in-between, five or six in-between. And we had, when we put out the application process for people to apply, we had very distinct criteria in that application process, and everyone answered their, submitted their applications based upon that criteria. I understand that criteria was not used?
I could let Chair Bernstein talk a little bit about that process.
Yeah, so the Commission received all of the applications, and as you'll see, the criteria also included subjective ones, so we basically defined, made it into three categories, which were recommended for use of Measure J community initiated projects, or move forward to capital improvement, or do not consider. So the only ones so far that have been taken off are the 14 which staff took off, and then the nine which, which were taken off either because they're mainly public arts or because they were basically incomplete applications. So all the rest of them remain on this list, is that 29 that you see that we're still hoping to get the funds for.
So if, you know, the criteria that the public was given was a point system. You got so many points for this, so many points for that, so many points for this. When you didn't use that system, was it subjective? How did, what did you, how'd you use to grade it?
Each of the commissioners submitted their own grading to, rating of one of those three to staff, and then we went through each one individually. The, the rating point system for some of them didn't apply, and so we used it at the subjective nature that was mentioned in the application so that we could come up with the best recommendations possible.
And what were those recommendations based on? A person's individual feelings about a project, or? I'm just trying to, I'm trying to figure out how we got, you know, because it was a very, it was a very scientific process, and it seems like we, the Measure J Commission decided not to use that and has gone to, and I'm trying to figure out what each of the commissioners, like if they said considered, not considered, what did they use? What was?
I believe each of us used that initial applicant, that initial point system on our own, and then came up with whether it applied to consider or not consider. I can't speak for the others, but that's how it all went into, each one then submitted it directly to staff.
Okay. Great, thank you.
This is Naomi Soto, Vice Chair. If I could just add as well, we went through a pretty lengthy process in developing the application itself, both as a cohort of commissioners as well as staff. And one of the feedbacks that we got from staff was how intense the previous process was for community initiated projects. So finding efficiency was one of, was a key priority, and making sure that what ended up going to engineering was something that were projects that were viable, that were feasible, that we weren't doing, you know, six months of data entry. Those were all real concerns by staff that we took seriously. As terms of the three, you know, buckets of recommend for community initiated projects, recommend for capital improvement projects, or do not recommend, each commissioner had the application itself and those criterias to help kind of answer those questions, because what is sustainable for one commissioner might not seem as sustainable for another. So even within those criterias, each commissioner might interpret it a little bit differently. So those criteria were still very helpful.
Thank you, Naomi, I really appreciate that. So the cost and, you know, overall cost and all that, how was that all calculated? You know, and are these You know, and are these costs real? I mean, I heard engineers say some of them are not.
I can step in and sort of reiterate what I mentioned earlier. These are all applications that were submitted from folks that did their own estimating, and engineering couldn't verify through the process whether those estimates were correct or not. We've always said, and we were very forward with the Measure J commission, is we can take these recommendations, but once we go through the process, we can review each one of them for validity, for cost, and really come back and say, this project, we can't move forward with it. That's why I also mentioned earlier, for the budget itself, we're setting aside a certain amount of money, but not necessarily dedicating it to these individual projects. It's for community-initiated projects, but this is the list that we will be working with. We may end up eliminating two or three that are not viable, but that is yet to be determined. So cost hasn't been estimated. We simply did a first run to look to see if we can increase a little bit of the cost based on what we typically do for other projects, by increasing for design fees, construction management fees, administration fees. So we did, we bumped them up a little bit. So the number is, and what we were hoping to show the commission, that if they decided it was a million dollars, truly it's going to be a lot more than that once we really review these projects in depth.
So I guess, this is for the Measure J commission, I don't know who wants to answer, but the, I think of an oversight commission as looking at past projects, whether they came in on budget, on time, if it met its goal, you know, that kind of, that's the oversight, I think, of what I read. Have you been doing that, and has that been occurring?
So for the projects that have existed in the past, we do review them and get the final budget each time, and what it, what it goes before city council to approve. So yes, we do that. On these, on the community-initiated, there was 59, and engineering said we need to, we can't review all 59 before they come. So make your recommendations on what we should look at, and then we'll go, they'll review the cost specifically on each of those.
So, you know, we haven't done Measure J for a couple of years now because of the pandemic. Do we know what, do we have an accounting of how the other Measure J projects have fared?
Well, each project does both have an accounting. There is supposed to be an audit that is done each year. We have not seen it this year, and I have raised that issue. I know in 2020, that because of the pandemic, it was delayed. But normally, under the ordinance, the, the commission should review the audit each year.
There is an audit, and then there's a true-up as well. So prior to the pandemic, we were presenting a true-up every year of our projects, where we were, how much money was allocated, how much we spent, how much is remaining, if we closed them, we were closing them. So we were doing that. The pandemic has thrown a wrench, and as I mentioned earlier, we're trying to get back on track.
Yeah, I think it would definitely help Measure J, it would help the city, it would help the staff if we knew, you know, like, as an example, if we're looking at two points, excuse me, with my glasses on, $2.5 million, if that's, if, you know, if those are true cost, if they weren't. So if any of these are approved, hopefully, we do that in the future. You know, I really think that is the purpose of an oversight commission, is to really look at those type of things, and to make sure we're getting benefit for what we're spending, right? And I don't know if there's any cost-benefit analysis that's done as well or not on that. I think, I think our council members have mentioned, you know, we'd, you know, that I think, you know, maintenance is one thing, but people like to see Measure J used. I just want to repeat what Christie said, you know, they want to see something done with their dollars. And I tried to look up what the purpose of some of Measure J was, you know, when it was first, I wasn't around, or I don't remember it. And I, we had a hard time finding that out. Maybe the, some of the commissioners might know. When we approved it, what was the selling point of Measure J?
The selling point was that it's going to be used for downtown revitalization and community services. Those were the two main things, along with infrastructure. The actual language of the bond and the ballot measure leaves it a little bit more at the discretion, it leaves wide open, because it's sort of including but not limited to. But that is the main projects, and we agree, the, the commission has really pushed hard to have visible projects that the community can see. We've been, we, we've been pushing very hard for having publicity in social media about the projects, as well as signage at the actual projects. You know, we recognize that there's staff, the city probably does not have enough communication staff, and what they do have is worked very hard, so we, we understood that. But we have pushed to have plaques up, we've pushed to have every project, there should be signage, so the community understands what a community service is, that it's not, it may be a library, it may be a playground, it may be the street paving that's on the street.
Great, thank you, thank you.
Can you finish, Councilmember Woods? Okay. Councilmember Holstidge?
I just, I believe I have the language in front of me. Can I read it as we're all doing this? And city attorney can double-check for me, but Ann Sheffer from the former Arts Commission and Cultural Center sent us, the public can see this, a document, a proposal, but she cited the language, so we'll have to double-check, but it says, "Measure J proceeds can be used for projects such as the downtown revitalization project, as well as for street improvements, pothole repair, the Palm Springs Library, park enhancements, trail projects, and other quality-of-life improvements and projects." So just what Chair Bernstein said. I just wanted to call those out, because I think in our discussions, that language is really important.
So if I could, I'd like to pick up just a little bit on Measure J. And certainly, we can go back and do a recap of the 10 years' worth of projects that Measure J has funded, and they will be some of the most remarkable projects that have occurred in our city. The downtown revitalization that we see is a direct product of Measure J funding. And I'll certainly provide opportunity for any of the Measure J commissioners to weigh in, many of whom have been, have had a number of years of service on the Measure J commission. But the community-initiated, initiated projects are very, very near and dear to my heart. I was president of One PS when we recommended that the community-initiated projects be a part of the budget, and that there be dedicated funds for them. And we did so as neighborhood activists for the very specific reason that in the first couple of years, we were thrilled to see the kind of funding that went to downtown and some of the other major projects. But a lot of us had a list of stop signs, and streetlights, and improvements in parks, and bathrooms, and other things that certainly didn't compare with revitalizing the downtown, but they made a tremendous difference in the quality of life. And we wanted to make sure that there was a place that those kinds of programs had a fighting chance for funding, and specifically asked city council to make it the Measure J commission that would be responsible for making those recommendations. And that has paid off. There are any number of stop signs, including the four-way stop that's a block from my house, and I did not vote for it, but I was here testifying for it, that is helping to make traffic close safer. So we can debate whether or not this project or that project should be funded. But when it comes to these community projects, I will be fighting for them till the day I leave this dais.
Commissioner Guzan?
Yeah, I'd love to dovetail on that. And to just make clear to council as well, when it comes to the community-initiated projects, we don't always know the exact budget for the cost of these projects. Case in point is the Hot Spots project that came out of One PS many years ago. And as those projects came to fruition, they costed more. We knew that it was going to be more than that $1 million allocated for the year. So Hot Spots actually turned into a three-year community project using $3 million, so that we could complete sidewalks where sidewalks didn't exist. And it was all pretty much safety measures, it's the lighted crosswalks that you see on Palm Canyon Drive, and the list goes on. And with what we're presenting today, as you can see, we're under the budget at 1.6 million, but we realize there's got to be a lot of wiggle room here, because as engineering delves into these projects, we might be looking at more than $3 million for the three years that we've accumulated. And then maybe this, these list of projects, if you so approve them, could turn into a two-year cycle of projects. Councilmember Holstidge brought up a really good point, that we would love a raise. So, you know, the 1 million is, you know, that's been in effect for at least 10 years, and Measure J has gone from probably collecting $9 million to 19 million. So it would be wonderful. And, you know, we do try to keep conscientious, to keep those community-initiated projects to be visible and for the community. Thank you.
I could just mention, Commissioner Robin did propose at one of our meetings, whether, suggest that whether we propose that the community-initiated be a percentage of the total budget. Originally, it was 10%. And so, I mean, that's, that's a, and now that our budget has more than doubled, I think that might be a good idea.
Councilmember Kors.
Great, thank you, Mayor. And given we're talking a little bit about how much on the community-initiated projects, I think before we get into specifics, staff is recommending, my reading is, we do this year's community-initiated projects, but the two last years, a million dollars each that council deferred, not be put back. So I just want to, because I see the difference in the one and three, and from the staff report. So I just want to understand the thinking, and it seems like, Mayor, that's something we should decide first, before we get into the specifics, because it will obviously change our discussion considerably.
So when I was putting the recommendation, I was, it was, I was behind, or I really didn't have a true understanding of what the total amount was, the carryover of what we had in the past. So I just, in my recommendation, I just kept the $1 million, but I would absolutely defer to 3 million if we had it to use it. So staff doesn't have a preference of the, not, I mean, not that we don't have a preference, if we have the 3 million, it would be good to allocate it for the, the community-initiated projects.
Right. That makes sense to me, but I wanted to make sure there wasn't some other reason?
No, no, that's it.
That wasn't clear. Okay, thank you.
Can you, I'm sorry, I didn't understand.
So with everything going on, as, me personally, I didn't really understand fully where the money was for the Measure J initiative, community-initiated projects. I didn't understand if it was 1 million, 2 million, or 3 million, and as we were going through the budget, and finally, it came to fruition that it was 3 million. So I, for me personally, I just left that at the 1 million, because that's what we typically do, but would obviously use the 3 million if it was available. So I didn't make a financial decision, I just went with what I typically do when I come for recommending, recommending community-initiated projects. But finance, the same, we do have the 3 million, so I would absolutely use the 3 million.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've been talking a lot about, there's a process still that needs to be done in terms of evaluating the projects and determining the costs, determining viability. Can you say a little bit about the timeline for that? And do we need to provide any direction in terms of which projects we'd like to see evaluated first, or is it something that can be done rather quickly?
Well, it's interesting, because community, these 14 community-initiated projects run a very wide range. There are some that we could give money, and it could be implemented immediately, as soon as we verify that the money is, so we can do that. And staff is, has very little involvement with that. The others, they're so different, each individual application is distinct, and has its own requirements, that we need to investigate. And, and I think if the million dollar, or the $3 million gets approved, we then will start evaluating each project. I think it would probably take me maybe three to six months to say, because we're also doing other projects, to really get down to a list that we would recommend moving forward. It may be, it may as well be, it may be all 14 projects, but today, I can't really speak to that. But yeah, definitely, if council has a preference, we could prioritize some of them and get after those immediately.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate that. You know, I think we're seeing that there's, within the community-based projects, there's a lot regarding our parks, like, we've, we've talked about it, we heard in our public comment, and that we have discussed as, as a council for quite some time. So I'm just interested in how we make sure that we're doing this in a way that upgrades our parks, and we're not, just like we don't want to double our efforts on the dog park if we have funding coming in, how do we make sure that we're taking a holistic approach with the parks? They have been updated in the last 30 years, because I remember when they took away the wooden park at Ruth Hardy, which I was opposed to, but I'm sure my parents were very happy about. So, but they were also, when the parks were redone, they left remnants of the old parks. That's why you see that tunnel at Ruth Hardy that seems just random. Well, it's because there was this old wooden structure that was like a mining shaft, and it was a whole thing. So I'd love to see a cohesive development of our parks, but I also want the kids to play on them now as well. So if we need a shade immediately, great, but how do we kind of look at the Measure J funding for the parks versus the capital improvement funding versus everything?
Right, and that's, yeah, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that, that conversation is in a bigger context, right? What you're going to see later on in the presentation is the actual capital projects, the, the ones that I mentioned in our last meeting, that staff is also working on. So these are 14 projects in one of my requests of 55 or 60 for capital projects. So those 14, then, that one particular request multiplied into 14 versus the 55 that we have, you know, before you as well today to fund. It is a bigger picture, and I think staff seeks direction from council. If, if we get direction at the end of this meeting and through the budget to focus on parks, and the, the result of that will be some projects that we have bringing, have been on the books or are bringing forward, kind of slide down in priority, and we don't get to those in year ones, two, three. So that's sort of the guidance that we need.
Did you want to comment? I thought so. Please, Councilmember Holstidge.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So Joel, could you just talk about the staffing for Measure J? So you're the city engineer, so you have a whole, very large job, and I know we've been hesitant to use Measure J funding for staffing, but it seems like the holdup, and I agree with Mayor Protem Garner, that we have this tension between needing a comprehensive park plan to invest in our parks. Not only do we have random pieces from old parks like tunnels, we have old gates that are rusted, and we have, we used to have turtles that were the water features for the community, and now they've been removed, and they're just empty, and there is no water feature. So we need a comprehensive plan, but we also have urgent projects. So like, how do we balance that? But I'm wondering if we have enough staffing to really execute on the full Measure J scope, right? This is kind of the Palm Springs story. We have a great idea, the council approves it, we think it might be a $9 million fund, now it's turning into a 20-plus million dollar fund, even more as our revenue grows and our city grows. And we haven't planned for the staffing of executing a larger fund like that. Because I agree, Measure J, I would support giving them a raise, so making sure that we at least allocate the minimum of what the community deserved over the last three budget cycles. But also, looking at some of these other projects, it always just makes me so sad, because these are just deserving projects for Parks and Rec, and I don't know why, or like, basic city facilities, and then they have to apply for this community funding, like the, you know, library meeting room, like, we should just do that, you know? And some of these are cheaper. So, sorry, there's a lot in there. But yeah, if you could talk a little bit about the staffing, shouldn't we just allocate a portion for a dedicated staffer, Measure J, or for a consultant to lead this effort, so our city engineer doesn't have to do that in addition to everything else?
So one of the requests we do have before you is funding from Measure J for a project manager, for a position, it could be, you know, a full-time position in our engineering department, to dedicate themselves to projects. And I'm going to be careful saying that if we bring them in to just dedicate themselves to Measure J, it becomes sort of tricky, because sometimes projects are not going on that are Measure J. So I would need, you know, one or two people that could help out with that. And one of the, I think the city managers are bringing forward certain requests for positions. So definitely, the engineering department would need more staff, and we are actively seeking more staff to be able to, to deliver projects, not only Measure J community projects, but the, the big infrastructure projects, like the $100 million, you know, Vistacino Bridge, and, you know, cycle, the HSIP cycle projects, the local road safety plan, all these other projects that we have before you, we do need more staff. So with the staff that we have today, we're challenged, we're working, we keep projects moving forward, but definitely, more staff would help. And if the funding comes from Measure J, that would be appreciated.
Thank you.
So I'm going to raise this simply as a process point, where, and I'm looking at the clock in terms of how long we've taken for this, and we're doing okay. But the, the issue of staffing is something that we will be addressing as part of the general fund, and perhaps dealing with all of the staffing issues in a holistic fashion. general fund, and perhaps dealing with all of the staffing issues in a holistic fashion at one time might make sense. There are, within these recommendations, some very discreet, specific projects. I, I struggle to understand how a straight shade structure at a specific park is something that we can't make a decision on in the absence of having a master plan for our complete parks. So perhaps we could take and move to the very specific recommendations that we have here, knowing that there are some larger questions that we need to answer, but we don't have to answer them in order to decide whether we want a shade structure or not, as example.
So I would move, if I can, or just ask the council to consider giving three million dollars in Measure J funds for community projects, for the commission and staff to then go analyze and fund, knowing that there are other things on this list. And I'm especially concerned about that this council reserved money for the library, and we wanted to build that fund every year. So I would also like council to consider if there are direct allocations from Measure J in addition to the community fund that we should create. So, you know, we have this three to six million dollar annual allocation for streets and road repairs. Great, it's been really important to getting that under control. I think we should have a direct annual allocation for Measure J for parks. I think we should think about having that set aside for the library, and so it's not this amorphous twenty-one million, twenty-two million dollar fund that can be used for, you know, staff recommendations, which are always really great, but that also allows council to get the work that we need done at the parks and, and library, et cetera, done.
So from a process standpoint, would it be appropriate for us to take all of the projects that we have recommendations for here, where staff and the Measure J commission have agreed, and if there's anyone that, of those that someone wants to pull out for separate discussion, we can. Otherwise, we can render a verdict as to whether or not we are in agreement with staff and with Measure J. I see heads going. Councilmember Coors.
No, I think that makes sense, and a very good time management effort. So I just would say, on the community-initiated projects, if we're going to rock, you know, if we're going to do it in one fell swoop, just that I'm abstaining on the drainage of the Boys and Girls Club. And I think for the Demuth Park upgrade and Palm Canyon Theater maintenance, we need more information, so it would be dependent on that information coming back to us. I'm fine with those, depending on, you know, what our agreement with Palm Canyon Theater company is and where we are on the state grant on the dog park. The others, to me, all seem, you know, not to have any, at least for me, any questions.
All right. And City Attorney, Councilmember Coors does not have to leave the room when we're having a discussion on the Boys and the Girls Club, is that correct?
Not if it's in general.
All right. Councilmember Woods.
So I, I'm sorry. I do have a question, and it's going to refer to the Boys and Girls Club, so I don't know if Councilmember Coors has to leap or not, but let me ask the question, and then we'll make a decision.
Okay.
So the drainage for the Boys and Girls Club, which is, I understand, we lease that to the Boys and Girls Club, is that correct? We lease that building to them?
We leased the land. According to the city attorney, we, we leased the land.
So they have a, a contract, the Boys and Girls Club has a contract with the city to maintain the building?
I'll have the city attorney come over here and answer the question.
My understanding that we lease the land to the Boys and Girls Club, and they own and operate the, the improvements, the, the building itself.
Okay. So, so they own the building. And then the Palm Canyon Theater, we actually own that building, is that correct?
I'm sorry. Apparently, we own, we own the building, it's a, it's a long-term lease, though.
We have, okay, so for the Boys and Girls Club, just to be clear for us and the public, we own the building and the land, and we lease it to the Boys and Girls Club to run the Boys and Girls Club. Is that the same with the Mizell Center? I think the executive director is shaking her head.
That is correct as well, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, I don't have all the details of all our leased buildings.
In the Palm Canyon Theater, is that the same thing with Palm Canyon Theater? We lease it to, okay. And then the, the Palm Springs, the PCC, the PSCC, is that owned by the city or is that owned privately?
That, I, I tried to look at that, I, I anticipated that question, I was reading through the application, I couldn't determine, I don't believe that we do own that.
I do not believe that it's owned by the city.
It's, pardon?
I do not believe it's owned by the city.
I don't think it is either, okay. I just, just want that on the record, is all. So do we know what those leases say? It seems like the Boys and Girls Club, the Mizell Center, Palm Canyon Theater, which I think Councilmember Coors brought up, do we, what is our agreement with them?
So one of the things I can offer council is, these fourteen projects, as we review them and vet them, and we do have agreements, or we own buildings, that we will look through each one of those agreements, make sure that, that it doesn't conflict with what's being requested. If it does, then we don't move forward with that particular project. So I don't, I can't speak up here today about each one of those leases, what we do have and what we don't have, but I can commit to reviewing those before we move any of these projects forward, as we're vetting each individual project.
Okay, so I would think that would...
I can answer at least. We've negotiated the Palm Canyon Theater a number of times while I've been on city council, so I've raised this issue too, because typically, so we own the land for some of these projects, some of not, and then we own the building, but typically, we're requiring our lessies, the, the leaseholders, to have all the tenant improvements, which is super problematic, especially for places like the Palm Canyon Theater. It's a nonprofit, it's an historic building, it's extremely expensive to keep up, and so that's what the problem has been, I think, is that we see these maintenance issues, you know, really grow, because the nonprofit lessies aren't able to keep up the maintenance when fundamentally, you know, the city, in my opinion, has, city has an interest in keeping those buildings beautiful, and, and, you know, at the end of the day, we own it. So yeah, it depends probably, like the staff said, on the actual lease for each site, but I see the former executive director from Mizell is here and could speak to that. But yeah, it's interesting how we, we require them to keep up mostly tenant improvements, but they can't always afford it. And they have to apply for it for community funds, Measure J, as opposed to us just doing the maintenance.
Thanks. So I have, I can, there have another question. Thank you. I, I guess I would like, as we go through the process, which I think Councilmember Coors asked for this, to get a better understanding of that, right? And really, what does the lease say? What's going on? What's our obligation? What's not our obligation? You know, and kind of, I think the public deserves to know that as well. I see for the, project thirteen and fourteen, thirteen is the wellness center at local schools, and fourteen is school gardens at local schools. It was pointed out to me that you first had almost a million dollars for those two projects, but that's been downgraded on the PowerPoint to one, one hundred and eighty thousand dollars?
Yeah, that was, that was just an error on our part, yeah. It was a miscalculation as we were reading the applications, we were projecting and trying to look at it, but definitely a miscalculation on our part.
And is that on school property?
I, I understand from the application that it is, but, Mr. Burstein?
It's on school property. You know, the school has its own funding source, its own tax thing, everything of that nature, but yet we're looking to fund that, but not fund something, you know, like a dog park or turf conversion, or the Mizell senior, you know, kitchen. I, you know, I just, I'm curious how you came up with that kind of a recommendation.
So just in terms of the school, I mean, the, the city has, Measure J has funded things that are on non-city-owned buildings before, they did, they put money into the Richards Center at the Palm Springs High School, and I believe also in the Architecture and Design Museum. So we felt that, fell under the aspect of community services. Especially in this case, there's been a lot of input to the Measure J commission about serving children, both in playgrounds and other areas, and especially because in the schools, the school district was committing the vast majority of the money. So they were just asking us for the, for the setup costs. In terms of those other ones that we mentioned, that they, which, which ones we were saying were not approved, they were, the dog park was recommended, the, most of these have been It's similar with the cultural center too, because it will serve the community, and that's what, that's why we've recommended doing it. They're raising the vast majority of their funds on their own, and we, for the sewer line, we've recommended that that come from Measure J.
So just, I want to be clear. So number forty-four, Dog Park, which people seem to be very interested in, and that Dog Park is in Rancho Club Estates, is not being funded, but we're funding a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in schools. I'm, I'm just trying to understand the logic.
We left that one off the list, because it wasn't clear there was actually a, a space for it, and I think engineer need to, engineering needed to look at it. It wasn't clear whether it was on a homeowner's estate or a city-owned property.
But, like I said, yeah, because of the nature, the extent of the projects, we didn't get near reviewing these and even making those determinations, so.
Yeah, that was, it was so general, it didn't even give a parcel, so there was very little information on that, so we couldn't even, we couldn't get clarification from the entrant, and we didn't know, it gave such a huge parameter of land that we didn't even know what they were referring to, and if that land was even public or private or so.
Okay, great, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
This is Vice Chair Virchley, just a couple additional comments. There has been recommendations for other dog parks, so, you know, in terms of Measure J community-initiated projects going to dog owners, there, there is that kind of allocation. We thought a lot about in terms of the populations that would be served, and, and that was kind of met. And just around the kind of the lease concerns or other contractual obligations, and just to kind of expand a little bit about what Joel is saying, each application, you know, has information that we aren't certain will make it move forward. It might be a contract with the city, it might be that the number that the entrant provided us is, is way far from what the actual costs are, and there might be other things. So I, I just want to kind of clarify that whether it was a resident or a parent who submitted that application, or the CEO of a major nonprofit organization here in the city, they're still going to have to go through that vetting process equally. And so that, but we didn't want that to stop the, we didn't want to get stuck in the vetting without these applications actually going forward too.
Other questions? Councilmember Woods?
No, thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I do want to talk a little bit about that wellness center in the school gardens, because I think this is actually the types of projects I want to see the city do more of, because when we're partnering with things like the schools, right, that means that the school is going to be in charge of this local garden for their students. Our residents get the benefit of having a community garden, we as the city are not having to upkeep it, which is the problem, right? We got a grant from the Clinton Foundation for an orchard over in Desert Highlands Park, but there was an ongoing maintenance, and it's been difficult now to figure out how we're going to maintain the orchard to make it fruitful. No pun intended, to make it fruitful. So I, I really do love seeing things like this, because we are supporting our community, but we're also taking some of the burden off the city. So I, I want to just let Measure J know that I really appreciate these types of projects, I want to see more of them, and I, I think it's, it's great. And I, I do appreciate, though, the clarification that it came from the school district. That was some of my questions for these, is I was a little bit confused in the staff report where some of them came from. So I think just from staff, if we can get that clarification in the future, I think that helps. Because at first I thought, well, what's the good in a garden if the school district's not involved? But to know that it came from them, obviously, that's great.
So I'm going to, in the interest of time, try to call the question in the, in the reference that we're using it here today. Notwithstanding that Councilmember Coors is recusing himself from the Boys and the Girls Club, when it comes to the one point six six seven, seventy-five that is recommended for community-initiated projects, do we have consensus in support? I, I certainly do.
So for clarification, the decision is really on this slide right here. If we agree that those community-initiated projects are acceptable...
Then let's go to the ones that...
Right.
There is agreement between the...
I know, that's not the slide.
Staff recommendation and the Measure J recommendation.
Right. So in, in whole, in this slide here, line item number ten, which is city project twenty-two twenty, is a Measure J community-initiated projects. The staff had put one million, Measure J is recommending three, if council can decide versus three and one, and then we're vetting all the other projects within the community-initiated projects.
Fair enough. And I believe Councilmember Hostage had recommended that we move forward at the three million dollar amount, is there consensus for that? City Clerk, do we need to take role on this, or just simply provide direction back to staff? All right.
Only direction to staff today.
All right, then, all those who are supporting it, please raise your hand. All right, so there is consensus. Then we can move forward with the other items which are not highlighted in yellow, that are ones where staff recommendation and Measure J recommendation are the same, is there consensus on, in support of those? Yes.
Excuse me, Mayor Middleton, can I just say that I, I have to abstain from any discussion on pickleball courts?
Correct. Okay.
So one of the things is for the, the Jackie Lee Houston Plaza upgrades, and I think it's a hundred thousand dollars. Does that take away from anything where we're looking at redoing the palm tree? I mean, is this, is this a this or that type of thing?
Not in this particular...
Okay, so that's going to come later, then? Okay, so it's not a this or that, then? All right, great, thank you. I don't have a problem then with it.
Councilmember Coors?
I hate to raise this one, but on pickleball courts, and I'm supportive of, you know, the hundred fifty to start coming up with a plan.
Right.
I just want to make sure that we don't have, there's nothing specific yet in that plan, right? Necessarily where they're going to be, or, because I think as we talk more, and I think it's sort of come up already, we, we have a new Parks and Rec Commissioner, really need to look at our parks in a broader sense, right? There's been requests for lots of other things in parks, there's been requests for two more tennis courts. I just want to make sure we're looking at it holistically, I don't, but if everyone's in agreement, one of the things we want is more pickleball courts, you know, putting the initial money aside, I think makes sense.
I think we've got a lot of consensus that we need a master plan for our parks, and we've simply said, there's a few discreet projects that we'll just go ahead and say, do it, and figure out how to incorporate that into the master plan later.
Yeah, so with that explanation, I'm good.
And I think that should definitely say pickleball court planning, or a more defined explanation for the community, because that's going to get people excited. And we did commit to doing more pickleball courts years ago, and looking at it in Sunrise Park and other places, and we have to do dual tracks. I know it's hard, because we don't have master planning, so we have to make these investments and also, you know, plan for it for the future. But I support all of those recommendations.
Right.
The slide that's up there has seventeen, the staff report has...
It's fourteen. What is the total amount? That's what I'm, and the, this one, the slide up there has Mizell Center, the one in the staff report doesn't have Mizell Center? Kitchen?
These are the regular capital improvement projects, not the community-initiated projects.
Oh, got it, okay.
But it just has the one line item for the community-initiated projects.
All right, so are we voting on that? Or, not voting, but are we talking about that, or are we talking about the community projects?
The community projects, the decision, I think, was already made to move forward with one million versus three million.
Okay, great, all right, got it.
Now we're actually going to the, what we would call the Measure J capital improvement projects, where staff makes a recommendation, and the Measure J commission either agrees with the recommendation or makes their own recommendation, or disagrees with staff. So I think right now what was being discussed is where the projects that are not highlighted, where both staff and Measure J agree on the recommendation. And the slide is, you see one of seventeen up here, and then it would be continued to this slide as well.
Okay. And then the, the roundabout for Indian Canyon and South, South Palm Canyon is not being recommended, but staff is recommending some design work? Design work's been done, right?
So the design work is in process right now. What we're recommending is to start building the fund to construct... What we're recommending is to start building the fund to construct it over the next two, three years. So, the way the five-year CIP, and we can get into that discussion later, is we are asking for money for year one, two, three, four, five. Typically, year one, we use it for construction, or we start setting aside money for years two, three, and four, until we get to a point where we have enough money to build a project. In this particular scenario, we have, we're asking for four hundred thousand to start setting aside money for construction. I think we have one of the chairs that wants to speak.
I wanted to make a comment about the pickleball, if I may. Six years ago, I was the chairman of Parks and Recreation, and I came before this council and recommended you fund a thing called pickleball. And I sent you all, at that time, we former members, a video done by NBC, that it was the largest sport upcoming in America for seniors. And I just wanted to compliment when I see what's going on now, is that what I predicted from what we did as a commission then at Parks and Recreation has all come through. Thank you.
So, just to go back, I, I would support that roundabout, starting, you're starting, you're doing the design, I'm sorry?
If, if I could, the question that was before us are support for all of the items that are listed here, for which there is agreement between staff and Measure J. And so, the roundabout is one that there's not agreement on, and that will come up for discussion, if you'll forgive me, as soon as we finish with this one.
Got it, got it, okay.
So, is there consensus where, for us to agree, where staff and Measure J have agreed?
Well, I have one other question. It's one point six million, the Amico Track Sewer Line. I, I think in the staff report, it talked about residents agreeing or not agreeing to that, because you're going to do an assessment district, and we'd be adding that here, so where are we at with that, and the other sewer lines that are needed in the city?
So, in the staff report, under attachment number two, item twenty-four, we go into the full discussion on Arnicot Track, and not necessarily Arnicot Track, but what the city does when, when communities are lacking sewer service, right? So, the explanation really goes into, the city typically creates an assessment district, or tries, if a community wishes to move forward funding sewer, the city creates an assessment district, it's, it's put to the voters, and the voters have to agree to be assessed over time to recuperate the money that is being invested into the sewer system that's created to serve them. In lieu of doing an assessment district, the city can fund projects. In this case, the Arnicot Track was one of those projects where the city decided to use or Measure J approved, using Measure J funds, to finish the final phase of the four-phase Arnicot Track. That was originally promised, I believe, in 2010, was started with CDG, CDBG funding. Eventually, CDBG funding ran out, and then the, because the city wanted to continue moving forward with the project, they used other funds. One of the funds was Measure J. We brought that back, because the last phase of the four-phase project was not constructed. So, we brought it back to Measure J, Measure J agreed that we could use Measure J fundings for that particular tract, and we have. And the, the, the funding that you see before, you, item twenty-two on the, on the slide, which is Project Nineteen Twenty-three, is to start funding the construction of the last phase of the Arnicot Track. For any other tract, I think in the answer to, in attachment two of the staff report, we go into the discussion of eight particular communities within the city of Palm Springs that still do not have sewer. The cost to actually facilitate the sewer for those eight tracts is about nine million dollars. So, in order to move forward, if we cannot create an assessment district, or if it's put to a vote and those communities wish not to proceed, being assessed for the construction of the sewer, we would then bring it back to a commission, or if the commission, Measure J Commission, or try to find other funding sources. But we would be talking about about nine million dollars to, to create those projects.
Right, so we're at the point of actually constructing, you, you've done the design, and we're...
We're, we're in process of the design, right now.
Okay, and then we're in the point of this one point six would be to actually construct it? That seems inexpensive for...
So, the, no, what we're asking for you, Arnicot Track, is, let me see, I lost it. It was, it was two hundred thousand, so we're building it to try to construct it. We're trying to add more money. Next year, we'll ask for more money to get to the final construction.
Okay, okay, great, thank you. Wait. Twenty-nine is, we're not following it right? Oh, I'm sorry, it's two hundred. I looked at the fire station, I crossed it. Thanks very much. Okay, great, thank you.
Councilmember Hostage?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I, we're not doing motions, but I would ask that we, I heard consensus around all of the projects that staff and Measure J Commission recommend to be funded. I heard a council member say, right, this says main library renovations if we receive state grants, so I would like to allocate that money regardless, I think that was Councilmember Coors, so regardless of that. And then, this total number here, twenty-nine, is that, what is that, the total cost? The, the total? How much is...
The total is just adding up all the numbers for, for the Measure J funding.
Right, so, and then how much is remaining in Measure J after these allocations, or the budget?
Approximately nine million.
Nine million? Nine million in year one, and then more in year two?
Yeah, so, every year, we're, we're building, every year, we get more money, so we, right now, we're receiving about twenty million, twenty...
Twenty, twenty-one every year.
Right, so, next year, you, when we're here again, we would be talking about those twenty million dollars.
Thanks, so I'm just thinking through the one, we could do that later, after that, but the one point six that was taken away from the library fund, I'd very much like to fund. And then, again, for council to consider here in the general fund, like a direct annual allocation, just like we do for road repairs, for parks and library.
I think we do have consensus on removing the restriction of the state grant, but I don't want to do anything that would jeopardize receiving the state grant.
Right, and in the five-year CIP, this is year one, year two, we have another four million for the library. So, we're trying to collect the money over two, three years, so that when we have all the money, we can actually construct it, because if we do get the award today, or we move forward with the money, we can design it and plan it, or plan it, then design it, and then construct it. So, as the five-year CIP is built, we try to allocate money over time to, that we're not trying to build every single project year one, or year five, we're trying to spread it out, at least that's what the intention is when, when I built the five-year CIP.
Thank you, it just depends on future councils. So, what we have in front of us is a way to secure money now for the library and other purposes, thanks.
So, are we in agreement?
The, I asked this last time, there was a plan for the whole park around the library and everything, is that included in this? And it was put on hold?
Well, I believe it was put on hold, but I understand that there is gonna be a master plan, that's gonna be developed for the, for the...
For the whole...
For the whole area, yeah. This particular grant really is for, is dedicated for the infrastructure, essentially, what's inside of the building, to revamp it, you know, so it's not outside of the building.
And does that in any way hurt the, you know, there's a long process to look at the library, and do you annex, you know, I mean, there's all of this work that had been done, this...
So, the building itself, if we talk about it as a building, the building itself needs these renovations, to bring up to code, structural retrofits, all these things that the grant's actually gonna pay for. So, if you don't look at it as a library facility, we need to do this work anyway. So, it'd be, I mean, it is a library, but for now, this is a project that needs to be done, and if we get the grant money, we can definitely use it. We're getting half the funding for it.
So, this, I guess, you know, we're spending, we're looking at spending four million dollars, which, you know, I think our library, but there was many alternatives, and I just want to make sure that we're not putting four million dollars in, and it's not ultimately what we want. And has that been decided yet? And maybe, as Keys can say that, just, I just, I want to...
The council had a process, where the council already gave direction on a site location, and we had a committee, and we did all of this work, so we did that.
So, this...
But, our library director can answer.
Hi, Mayor of Council. The, the grant project is infrastructure only, and it doesn't include carpet, paint, furniture, and any of the cosmetics, so there are going to be extra costs for that. Let's see, what was your, oh, is there a plan? Right, was that the question? I'm sorry.
Ultimately, what do we, I mean, ultimately, what was decided with the, with the library? And how does this fit into that?
So, currently, the only thing that was decided was that the community wants it to be at Sunrise Park. That was the only thing that had been decided. In 2013, we had a plan, but it's a decade old, so we need to revise that plan and make sure that it's up to today's standards and needs. So, part of, if we do get this grant, the nice thing is it does include money for planning, architectural design, and, and whatnot, but that all needs to be done, whether we get the grant or not. And we shouldn't, they've said that they're gonna announce, now it's spring or summer, so we're looking at probably summertime before we know.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
So, do we have agreement? All right, good. Again, just trying to deal with process, we increased the Measure J initiated projects to the three million instead of the one million. So, when I'm looking at all of the items on page five, a hundred and fifty thousand for the San Rafael turf conversion, the Racket Club Road Diet, the gazebo at Victoria Park, the Sonora, crosswalks, and the Mizell Kitchen, if my math is correct, that's one point four five, one hundred, one million four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So, it would seem with having granted three million dollars, the three million dollar, we have enough to cover all of these projects that Measure J has recommended and that staff did not recommend. Are we okay with moving forward with all of the recommendations of Measure J that are on page five, in light of the fact that we added two million dollars? Councilmember Coors?
First, first on that, I'd want to hear from staff if the reason they didn't recommend them was funding, or for other reasons. And, so that's one, just if we can go through each one, so we understand. If, if it was just a funding thing, it's different than if there are other reasons.
Sure.
Two, one thing was left off, right, just under two hundred thousand dollars for the commercial sewer upgrade to the cultural center, that was also recommended by Measure J, and I don't know if it was recommended or not by staff. And, I would just, if we're gonna have that discussion, we should talk about the two things staff recommended that Measure J didn't, because what is the total if we add all those together, knowing that all these are gonna end up costing a whole bunch more than expected, so. So, I'd want to look at those, because there are two, you know, staff recommended, the project manager, and the roundabout, which I have some thoughts on as well. So, I'd want to look at the whole package, unless we can afford everything, and that would be great.
Can I clarify something real quickly? So, some of them that staff didn't recommend are carryover from community-initiated project request. So, when we got our list of community projects from the community, from the actual community, some of them, we felt, were more appropriate for capital. So, because the budget is so small, we get that teeny-weeny little million dollars a year, we can't do all fifty-nine projects, or after we vet forty-nine of those projects, or whatever. So, some of them, we felt were important, but maybe they cost more. So, we're saying, okay, let's not make them community-initiated projects, we're gonna move them into the category of where staff lives at City Hall, and have, have them join forces, with that was staff's list. So, staff doesn't recommend these, because they didn't come from staff, they didn't come through City Hall, they came from the public. But we're recognizing that, hey, these might, some of these might be valid and important, so we are engaging staff to consider it, and then, if we recommend it, then we're looking at council to approve that recommendation. So, I hope that clarifies.
Thank you. Councilmember Coors, you raised a very valid point. Would it be appropriate for us to talk specifically about the police-fire-city replacement radios first, since that has the largest financial consequence? Not this? Okay. So, could we get from staff and from Measure J, discussion of your apparent difference of opinion as to whether three and a half million dollars should come from Measure J, or one million dollars should come from Measure J?
Sorry.
And, please correct me if I'm wrong...
No, no, I was just gonna say, we have staff here to...
I thought we had agreed that this, in another forum, that we were going to do the replacement of the radios. So, now, it's simply a question of where the money's coming from.
Correct.
That's what the question is, where the money's coming. We, we believe it's important, we believe it should be done, it just came to us a couple weeks ago, that it should all be funded by Measure J, and part of our discussion was about having visible, tangible things to the public, and this was a lot of money. And so, our, our request was really whether staff could, or find other sources of funding for this. We understand that it's one of these things that can be spent relatively easily and quickly, which is different than a lot of other projects, but it is certainly not because we didn't think it's something the city should have.
So, the only question before us now, since we've, if I'm correct, that we've already decided we're gonna replace the radios, is this gonna come from the general fund or from Measure J?
That is correct.
So, can staff, Madam Mayor, if I can, so can staff explain why it should come from Measure J? Typically, we haven't used Measure J for this purpose, it doesn't seem to me to align with Measure J, I support it being funded through general fund, why is it Measure J expense?
Yeah, what might be more apparent as we move on through today is the other buckets of funding that we're working with. So, we started the year with, or were projecting to start next fiscal year with approximately a forty-five million dollar reserve balance, so those were funds not spent in the general fund in previous years. So, that would be the alternative source. Currently, the city manager recommendation proposes spending about thirty-five of that, so there is funding available. The reason to propose Measure J was, one, I had come to learn that there were other investments made in the police department, I believe the CAT RMS was one example, and in, although as a single project, it's relatively large, in the context of the overall funding over years, I thought it was relatively small. And, and really, some of the other recommendations that haven't been solidified yet by council, like an investment in the Affordable Housing Fund and other things, we're kind of competing to bring that balance down to about two million, and I was aware that there were other things that council was interested to pursue, that we haven't yet come up with dollar amounts. So, it was really just balancing those things, whether council wants to decide the million that Measure J has offered, and the balance from the, the reserve fund, or any other ratio. We do have the funding available, it's just a matter of where it comes from.
Councilmember Coors?
You know, given, and we have a lot of, right, infrastructure and capital needs, and we have a lot of staffing needs, and even with the great budget numbers we have, we can't do all of them, and obviously, this is one that's a high priority. Where it comes from, I'm somewhat ambivalent on, but we have, right, in the regular budget, I think we have two million from the general fund, we typically move to capital, could that be spent for this?
Absolutely.
Given we have an extra, so much extra money currently, sort of in Measure J, why move this, you know, maybe we just keep that in the general fund, and, you know, we, then we're just short five hundred thousand, which we can find somewhere, right? Whether it's for Measure J or not, but if we use the two million that we, that we have in the budget, right, so we don't have to go into fund balance, we can use the two million that we normally would move over to capital, since, just an option, right, as a way to easily find money, relatively.
I think that's a good option. Any objection? And I think we have a decision on that one. Next, just because we've got a dispute here that has some large-dollar figures attached to it. Measure J did not recommend the roundabout be funded, could you talk about why?
Measure J did fund the design, and the feeling was that we haven't seen what the design or the plan was yet, and they were being, we were being asked to put aside the money, so that's why we voted against it. I know there's some people on the commission who don't agree with the roundabout at all, but this was mainly because we haven't seen the design, or reviewed it, as to what the funds are gonna go to.
So, from my standpoint, as Measure J had already approved it, the council approved the project, allowed us to move forward with the design, the design is in process, I just didn't have it available to show Measure J, but the project, for me, from council, from what I understand from council, should move forward, so I thought Measure J was a perfectly good use of those funds.
It, for me, is a project that I would like to see us move forward with. I'm, again, somewhat neutral as to whether or not it comes from Measure J. I'm, again, somewhat neutral as to whether or not it comes from Measure J or from the general fund.
I agree.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree. So I'm trying to remember back, we don't have all the details for all these projects in our packet. So the other funding that might be available for that project, like Measure A or gas tax money or other infrastructure dollars, you know, I've always been concerned about using additional, you know, Measure J funds as much as we do on streets when there are other funds for street repairs. I know it's not sufficient, but always want to use that as a first point, especially if there's other infrastructure dollars. So you're the expert on this, so you tell us that there's not enough, and we need Measure J.
So for us to fund the project, it's really not a maintenance project. It's a huge capital project. We would have to either go with Measure A funding, and then that reduces the amount of money for other projects that we typically use Measure A for, or we would actually go out for grants to see if we can get it funded. But those funds are not always readily available. And the way I've set up the CIP, I'm going to be building up the budget for at least four years before I think I'm going to construct this project. So we could always come back, and I think I mentioned to the Measure J Commission, if you guys don't allow me to use the money this year, I'm going to come back next year and ask for the money again. Because it is a funding source, it is for a city project, the council already approved it, so, and it's the way I have to manage all these projects. I don't have the funds always available. I have multiple funding sources, and I have to use them in different ways for different projects, right? We have six bridges, I think the total is over 100 some million, that money, so I see what, where the money is, and I try to get it from those available funding sources.
Have we looked yet at federal or statewide infrastructure dollars for these project, this type of project?
So that would be something we would look at if we're applying for grants. Some grants do award for roundabouts, but you're competing against statewide essentially.
Thank you.
Member Wood?
For the project, we have supported it already, already, already. I think if we, if we couch it into traffic calming, safety, add pedestrians, add bicyclists, we still are going to have, any grant we get, we're likely going to have to match. So I would be for funding it at this point. As we keep moving, obviously, it's a long cry from actually building it.
Correct.
But like the library, we have to keep kind of moving these bigger projects forward and always take just smaller projects on, so I would be for it.
Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, no, I would agree with that, is just start putting the money aside while, and obviously, and just will confirm the obvious, which is if you get grants for it, the money would come back, right?
Absolutely, we would use it.
Yeah, so.
I agree. So we've got consensus on that. And I believe when it came to the engineering project manager, we agreed to have that discussion deferred to the larger discussion of all staffing. So that brings us down to items 13 through 17, if I'm correct, that we've not resolved.
If I can just make number nine.
I think he's not moving.
Oh, my mic's out. Thank you. I think just what we've heard from both staff and what we've heard from Measure J, having support with these Measure J projects, both its history, how they're planning out, would be a good thing. I just wanted to say that while Measure J was here. I know there's some frustration of not being able to get, you know, quality information, and part of that is our staffing issues. So I just wanted to make that clear as my point of view. Thanks.
So with 13 through 17, if my math is correct, we've got enough money to pay for all of them. But that still doesn't mean we may have separate discussion desired on one or more of these.
Yeah.
Councilmember Coors?
And there, so it would be helpful for me, are all of these plus the sewer upgrade at the Cultural Center things staff would have supported if you knew that we were going to support the 3 million? Or some of these things you wouldn't support, even with the money?
So my point of view on these projects is from the bigger CIP picture of the 55 projects that we already have in the queue that we're bringing forward. I just felt that as far as staff's concerned, our workload is, you know, it's pretty big. Adding more projects just means that those projects are going to sit there for quite a while before we actually get to them. So that was why I wasn't recommending bringing any more projects forward. We didn't, we did say that those projects may be valid, and we could, we already have the applications, and the Measure J Commission can bring them forward at any time. But at this point in time, as a discussion we had in our previous meeting, we do have lots of projects already on the books, and I was just simply trying to avoid adding more to them. If they are added today, they will go on, and we will get to them eventually.
Okay, so let me just ask you, because, you know, a whole bunch of them would be, obviously, the city would be doing the work. The Mizel Kitchen, I'm assuming the city would not be doing the work, so would that be a different situation?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Yes, obviously.
And how about the sewer upgrade of the Cultural Center?
That one would be full vet, if it had to be fully vetted by staff.
Okay.
And then we would have to then look and see if it's even viable, if we can do it, and what's the design, and, yeah, so there's a lot of vetting on that project.
Right, okay. So the Mizel Center, one is not a staff issue, so that makes that one a little simpler in my view. And obviously, an important project, and good to see that we're not being asked to do the whole thing, you know, which is what we originally had, so. And the only other thing I want to ask is, you know, we're looking at some of these lighted crosswalks, right? Which one neighborhood asked for? Would those be the first choice for lighted crosswalks in the city, or just because that's the only one that a community member asked for? Because I think that needs to be part of a broader plan, like where are the most dangerous ones to look at? And I think we need to do more of those, but I think we need to, I'm a little uncomfortable taking these out of that unless staff and the commission decided, no, these are the most, this is more needed than anywhere else in the city.
The one, they haven't been vetted by staff. And two, we do have other, you know, another process, which is the community action forms that we use for traffic calming. I believe we are working on traffic stops, stop signs for these intersections, so this would just go with that. But we haven't vetted it, and it's not, I wouldn't say this is the one intersection that I would put the money on because it's the most important.
And I remember.
I don't have that information to.
I think each of us probably participated with a consultant, I'm just remembering this, right? And the residents in each district about, and getting input on these, so I'd rather we do that in a structured way. I think it's an important thing, and this might be in the top of the list, but I don't see taking those one out. But that's a separate.
Hey, which one's that?
Oh, just picking that for lit up instead of having a plan for how we're doing them based on safety.
Did they submit for a traffic calming?
I believe there is a traffic calming for those intersections, but it's not for lighted intersections.
Okay, so maybe as we look at our traffic calming budget later, we're looking at increasing that, and maybe we can expand what that actually means or what the money could be spent on.
That's a possibility.
And that would cover that. Can I just go back to Councilmember Coors' comment? On the Mizel Kitchen Center, I, we asked for, in any of the, as well as the Palm Canyon Theater and the Boys and Girls Club, we have to see, I'd like to actually know, do we do it, do they do it? How does that work if it's our building, but they're, you know, under tenant improvements?
Right, we still have to vet how that process is going to work if we're giving the money. How, are we going to get proof of it was done? So all those things have not been worked out, but they will be worked out.
They will be worked out.
Correct.
So on the, the cultural center, Palm Springs Cultural Center sewer lateral, what is the need for that?
From what I understood of the application, they want to expand the area, and without the sewer lateral connection, they can't expand their facilities.
Yeah, I think the way it was presented, I think they have to add bathrooms in order to have a full theater there. So they're going to do their own expansion, but they had asked the city for the money for the sewer line, Measure J for the sewer line.
So is that an estimated cost of 199? Is that, is that what they put in, or?
It did come from the application, has not been vetted.
I don't, is it something we should vet and look at before we come back for a final decision?
Just like the other projects that I've mentioned, that we would look at them, and we may either ask for more money because the funding is not adequate to support what the request was. So yes, it's, every single one of these projects falls into that category.
Thank you.
May I approach him?
Thank you. In terms of the Road Diet and the crosswalks, one thing that we haven't had come before us yet but is pending is that pedestrian safety plan. So I, I would be in support of taking those off for now so that we can look at that comprehensive plan that we spent a lot of time working on, while the consultant worked on, but we also contributed as a community. So I think that would just be a little more helpful first.
Right, and we are, I do have it in the queue for
Yeah.
the next council meeting.
Exactly, right. It's almost here. So I, I would just appreciate if we could talk about that first.
Yeah, and the Racket, just from my perspective, Racket Club Road Diet, it's such a huge project that it would be completely, you know, we'd have to first, our circulation element would have to support it, and if it doesn't, we wouldn't even do the project. So I think it's way too early to even put a money aside for that particular project.
And I, just to be clear, I think all of these projects are great. I just want to make sure we're thinking through the whole pedestrian plan.
So if I understand correctly, you're suggesting that with line 14 and 16, we take those off for now to defer to deal with them more holistically. I can support that. I still want to do them, but. Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you, I support that if there's some urgency there. This is my district, and those are really dangerous intersections, and the neighborhood's been asking for a long time. So I've personally gotten in a car accident in one of those intersections after years of lobbying from the community, right? Those are, so it might be needed, but I agree on a comprehensive plan. The problem is that our, I raised this at the last time when we were talking, choosing those projects, that it isn't a comprehensive engineering-driven process. It is all, that's, even that process is designed by the community and community requests too. So, but yeah, I support removing those ones to look at the pedestrian and safety plan and having engineering look at, look at it, but knowing that if, sometimes when we defer these things, they just go away and never come back.
Joel, did you say this is going to come back to us at the next meeting?
So the comprehensive pedestrian master plan and the local road safety plan will be coming back. And that, those two particular plans identify areas of the city that we would seek to, to improve, do projects for. And in the CIP, I've actually have line items requesting funding for those two plans so that we can build it up over the five years, so we can construct those projects that are being requested in those plans.
And approximately when will that be coming back to us?
Next council meeting, which is next Thursday.
All right, then I think waiting till next Thursday is doable.
Sorry.
So for the Racket Club Road Diet, you know, I know the neighbors have worked very hard on that. It's in the plan, it's recommended in the plan that you're bringing forward to us. Maybe, you know, leaving the funding in there to fund projects in that plan might not be a bad thing, or are you saying that you are going to come up with alternative funding for that plan?
In the capital program, the five-year CIP, there's a line item specifically set aside for local road safety plans and for pedestrian plans. So I'm asking for money because it's such a huge plan, both of them. There's lots of improvements, infrastructure improvements. We're asking for funding to do those projects over time. High priority, most risky, or where there's more danger, we're going to work on those first. So it's a plan that's going to be distributed, worked on over five years. So that if, and I guess you're correct, in the certain portions of Racket Club, there are recommendations for work to be done. Those I would, I believe, belong in that plan, in the funding request for those two.
And there'll be funding request for that as well?
Correct.
As you come up next week? So, and you said that the Racket Club Road Diet in particular is 100,000. Was that the neighbor's estimate, or where did that come from?
I don't know where that number came from.
You don't know, but you're saying it's unrealistic.
Yeah, it hasn't been vetted. It might be just to start the design or contemplating the project. But as I said, in the local road safety plan and pedestrian master plan, some of these have been identified, and we are asking for funding for those plans separately over the next five years.
Okay, so I just don't want it to be lost, I think is. Councilmember Holstidge said.
I do believe, and please correct me if I'm wrong, we approved the funding for the Racket Club.
Different, different part of it.
Okay.
Different section, yeah.
Different section, yeah.
So do we have consensus now on 13 through 17?
Whoops, I think.
So this came from the, the Racket Club Estates Neighborhood Organization, and I think it was primarily for, for street painting to do it.
Okay. Councilmember Coors?
Yeah, I mean, my only concern, but it's on all of this, right, is what we just heard is there's no, there isn't staff to do a lot of these, so, you know. And then on, right, gazebo or pavilion at Victoria Park, I mean, the more we can have in the parks, the better, just whether that should be part of, if you're not going to get to it until we have a park plan, doesn't make sense to do it right now. Because in that plan, what we may hear is actually, you know, more important is this, you know, right?
And one of the things.
Water feature, something else for the kids, so I don't.
And anything in a park, I think, if, once we do get a Parks and Rec director, they can actually look at the use of those parks, right? If in that location where they want the gazebo, there's soccer fields that maybe the applicant doesn't know of, or, so there's, there's a lot to be investigated before.
I might hold off on that until we do that and not take it, right, while we're looking at it, given it's not going to happen anytime as soon as we would all like.
I support that, and we do have covered tables at Victoria, so I think that it's not a dire need.
All right.
So I just, I don't know if I agree, but I could be the lone wolf on this. A park plan could take a very long time to build. We put this out, and it was, it was, the Measure J Commission, city staff, city council members went out to the neighbors and said, tell us what you want. And they don't have full information. They, and we gave a rating system of which they would get points for things, right? You know, they're not city staff, they're residents who know what they want or what they desire in an area. A gazebo doesn't do anything, it can be moved. I don't know exactly what that looks like at this point. But if we are going to just say we're not going to do this because we don't have a plan, we need to change the whole application process to educate people much better about what they're applying for. Because we lead people to believe they might get something, right? Or they have the opportunity to get something based on a rating system. And then we don't give it to them based on other factors that they weren't aware of. That whole process, I think, needs to be relooked at in how we actually do community projects. I just think it leads people down a path. You know, we have 60 projects, so people were feeling hopeful that we might do it.
Right, understood.
And now we're, we were down to 17, and we're removing a few of them. So, you know, I just think the process, I think we want these, I definitely want to see these community projects, but I don't want to see people frustrated with city council, the Measure J, or city staff in the process, when we tell them we're doing it one way, and then we switch and do it another way already into the process. That's frustrating for me as well.
I think there's clearly some issues as to how long it's going to take us to put together a large master plan. If we set aside $600, $600,000 in Measure J, it is going to take time before that master plan gets developed and before this would be implemented. So it's basically a placeholder at this point. And if, as a part of the master plan, they come back and say, you know, gazebo really isn't the best use of the $600,000, I don't believe we're doing anything by approving it here today that would cause us not to be able to amend that decision later.
Thank you, Mayor. To go along with that, I do think we've, one thing that hasn't been fully addressed yet is Councilmember Holstidge's comment about having, with the community-based projects, a library amount, parks amount. And I think that's what we're kind of hearing with this, is it would be good to have dedicated funds for some of these large-scale projects because we don't know exactly what we want to do yet. So I would really support what Councilmember Holstidge already laid out, and I think is along the lines of what you're saying.
And I think that makes sense. Would it be appropriate for us, since we've got the Measure J Commission sitting here, to ask them to come back to us with some recommendations regarding revisions to the process that would reflect the kind of conversation that we're having here today? All right, so we just gave you some more work.
Yeah. And I have one more question, especially with Measure J here. So given, I think our rec, all our recollection is, we sort of had a motion that we'd spend 3 million when money came back in after the cuts we had to make for neighborhood parks, and we haven't. came back in after the cuts we had to make for neighborhood parks. And we haven't said whether that would come, I don't think we said where it would come from. Was it General Fund or Measure J? So maybe that's something, I'm not sure what the best process is to figure that out. Maybe the city manager could weigh in, because that could cover some of these as well, right? So, and then we could have a chance for them then to discuss the process for an ongoing park allocation.
Yeah, so this might fast-forward a little bit to the conversation with the capital improvements plan more generally, but what staff had anticipated is seeking general direction from council, exactly along the lines you're discussing. So for instance, if council said we wanted to pledge $3 million or perhaps more to parks because we want parks to be a focal point of the next handful of years' progress in capital construction, I think the first thing we'd do is go poll the projects that are already identified for parks, some of which you've reviewed today, some of which might be slated for future years, and then start to look at it and analyze, number one, how much is committed, help really paint a picture, right? Because numbers are one thing, but you throw a shade structure and a gazebo up, maybe you still feel like the park needs a lot of help, and it doesn't really fit what you're thinking about when you dedicate $3 million. So somewhere between what we've already allocated and some parks master planning, we'd bring back two or three options to make sure that we're really fulfilling the vision of upgrading our parks at a future meeting. And for now, we would either recommend a placeholder, or again, maybe just refrain from allocating, you know, every less dollar available to make sure we have that flexibility as we go into next year to allocate three, or you might decide after you really look at it, it should be five or six, or some other number.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, and my God, it would be more, but just the three we already voted for, we should have in this budget somewhere, right?
And so just for that portion, again, what we might do is look at what's already allocated and demonstrate what that number is, and whatever gap we think exists, and make sure we make that whole.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
Yeah, I submit, Madam Mayor, if I can.
You can.
I support that recommendation by staff. I think that's smart, because I also, I can't sitting here say that a Victoria Park gazebo is more important than X, Y, Z other needs. So I think that's really smart, and, you know, yeah, we're, if we have this annual pavement rehabilitation for $6 million every single year, you know, personally, I think that the park investment for the city should be at least that, if not more. So yeah, some, some planning around and recommendations from staff on that would be great. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, this is Vice Chair Sotow. If I could just add one more comment about the parks projects that have come before as the Measure J, and particularly around community-initiated projects. Just a reminder that they came from a variety of different places. So some of the parks projects came from residents, some of them came from commissioners, some of them came from staff. And so there is kind of a wide variety of parks projects that we need to kind of determine, you know, one scale, and how quickly they could be done. But I think there's a wide variety in terms of urgent needs and also long-term investments. So I would look forward to kind of creating a process where all of that could be reflected.
Councilmember Holstidge?
Thank you. Appreciate that, Vice Chair. I just wanted to add to that, because I think that there are some projects not selected, recommended for other funding, that is on the community-initiated projects that I mentioned, that might just, you know, be included in a Parks and Rec or maintenance budget, that again is sort of sad sometimes to see applied for. So yeah, staff and Measure J could look at that.
If I can just comment, those are the, there's about 20 different parks ones there, and our, our request is that we get input and priority from the Parks and Rec Commission.
Great.
Some of them, they submitted, and other ones came from elsewhere, and we thought they'd be better suited to prioritize.
Thank you.
So strictly in the interest of time, I think those are decisions and recommendations we're going to get in the future. So if I could go through these, do we have consensus on 13? San Rafael turf conversion? Yes, I'm getting to lightning round. Do we have consensus on 13? 14, I, we have consensus to remove? Okay. We're going to discuss it next meeting. The gazebo, we are going to discuss as a part of the master plan. Okay. The 16, the lighted crosswalks is coming back to us next week. And 17, the Mizell's Kitchen, we have agreement to fund.
The Culture Center Sewer.
And the Culture Center Sewer. All right.
Which I think we have.
Somebody correct me, but I think we've completed business that involves the Measure J Commission.
So just, I have to recuse myself from the Cultural Center to let you know, so I can't vote on that.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, the public can't hear me. I have to recuse myself from the Cultural Center on that one, so, and that's fine. I just want to go back and say on the community-initiated projects on 13 and 14 with the school district, I'm not necessarily in support of that when we have other projects that are in demand. That's all.
Councilmember Holstidge?
I just have one more question. The, people called in about the animal shelter, so shade and other animal structure, animal shelter improvements. Is that a discussion for here or later? Or it's already included?
That's one of the 14.
Oh, we already did that. Okay, good. I just want to make sure we didn't miss anything that the public called in for. So we got it. Thank you.
So I believe.
May I ask?
Yes.
I have to clarify, I might have missed it, but number 19, engineering, engineering staffing, whether this was approved or not. I know we discussed, but I didn't hear a consensus.
We didn't approve it from Measure J. We're going to discuss it as part of our staffing later, maybe in the next 25 minutes, or as part of the budget. Although I got a sense that everyone thought we needed that, at least that position.
So to the Measure J Commission, thank you for all of your work, and thank you for taking on the additional work that we have given you. We look forward to hearing your recommendations. Let's take 10 minutes to do the movement of staff back to the seating there. Unless there are any other comments or questions from everyone, I think we can excuse with great thanks the Measure J Commission. All right, we will take 10 minutes.
And get started. It is my understanding that the Planning Commission will be in this room at 5:30. And therefore, the amount of time that we have limited, and we had set aside 30 minutes for the transfer of this room to the Planning Commission, but we may go over by a couple of minutes, but we can't go over by very much. So what I'm going to ask is, we prioritize those things that we can get done and must get done today. And with that, City Manager?
Okay, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and Council. We've covered Measure J, really great progress there. That's excellent, and we'll be able to solidify that in the final budget. We'd like to go to the airport next, and just by way of very high-level setup, you've seen the operational and capital expenses, but we heard some comments from Council about wanting to make sure that there were proper investments in customer experience, kinds of improvements and other things. So rather than just showing you the first funded year, we've provided you a little more information so you can see some of the improvements that are anticipated in future years. So we think that is the focal point of the conversation, but we are here to answer any other questions you have. So with that, I'd like to welcome Veronica, or sorry, Victoria, to the Zoom room who's going to present, and if PSTV could please queue up her PowerPoint. I will be flipping through slides, so Victoria, just let me know when to advance.
Yeah, Justin, I'll be starting on Slide 5. Thank you, Justin. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Victoria Carpenter, the Airport Administration Manager, and I'll be presenting the five-year Airport Capital Plan. So Slide 5 gives Council a better understanding of the capital projects. It lists the projects which are proposed to be completed over the next five years for the airport, starting with the first fiscal year and fiscal year 2223. Please note, the numbering is mislabeled, so please reference any duplicate lines with an A or B. For example, the second project is zero emissions and infrastructure, so we would identify it as Item 2A. The airport is one of the city's enterprise funds and currently operates under a residual agreement where the airlines collectively assume financial responsibility by agreeing to pay any cost of running the airport, including capital projects. Also, on an annual basis, the airport qualifies for entitlement grant funding provided by the Federal Aviation Administration for projects that best carry out the purposes of the Federal Airport Improvement Program, with highest priority given as safety, security, reconstruction, capacity and standards. Because of the terms outlined in the airline agreement and the mandates and limitations of the FAA program objectives, the city has somewhat of a limited discretion over airport capital projects. On the slide, you'll see the first nine projects highlighted in green, which are the proposed fiscal year 2223 budget, and a total of about 13 million in projects. The airlines and the Airport Commission have approved approximately 5 million in special capital projects, and the remaining 8 million are approved by the FAA for grant funding. The remaining 17 projects are for future years, and the total for the estimated five-year plan is about 47 million. Some of the projects identified in fiscal year 2223 include terminal upgrades and beautification within the project. For instance, Item 3A, janitorial equipment replacement, will include intelligent and automated systems to keep the facility clean. Item 3B, design baggage claim, will include upgrades to carpeting, new paint, public art, and ADA improvements. Most of the proposed future projects have been reviewed with the airlines and the FAA. The available funds for the airport capital projects include approximately 48 million, broken down between aeronautical and non-aeronautical fees, unassigned fund balance, and FAA grant funds. Staff is seeking general input from the City Council on identifying projects that a majority of Council agree should be included or excluded from the budget, and projects that need to be added that are currently not included, projects that need to be discussed further before funding is allocated, and any other feedback about the priority of projects and general direction. Like I previously stated, some of the projects that we have listed on the airport project listing has other projects that happen within it. So we are always considering beautification within the projects that are identified on the screen. So thank you for your consideration, and I'm available if you have any questions about any of the projects.
Are there questions for Victoria? Victoria, I have one. The passenger experience in terms of restroom facilities in particular throughout the airport leaves something to be desired. Could you be specific as to what will be occurring to rehabilitate the restrooms?
Yes, so we actually did not include any of the current projects that we have in the works for the airport. The capacity improvements for the restrooms is something that we have planned for this fiscal year 2223, and it's actually going to overlap a little bit in, I'm sorry, in this current fiscal year that's ending at the 30th, and it will overlap into the upcoming fiscal year. So that's not something that we have in the proposed budget. We also are going to include lighting, ventilation, and new fixtures within those capacity improvements for the bathroom and modernization.
So given that, how many projects are currently underway that are already approved and not a part of what we are being asked to approve now?
Yes, so we are working on the, well, one thing, we're doing a rebranding of the website design. I believe that was brought to Council recently. So that's kind of definitely improved the passenger experience with navigating through the airport. Some of the items that's included on there is making it easily accessible for customers to be able to find different locations in the airport while they're at the airport so that they could utilize an app to locate where they're going to go. And then we're even just doing a complete rebranding of the airport to kind of have our own identity. The other items is an automated vehicle inspection system that's going to help improve some of the ground transportation, including TNCs, which are the transportation network community. That's, so there's some items there that is going to be considered on our land side that's going to be making improvements to improve the passenger experience. And we're also going through a common use upgrade that's happening during, it's going to overflow to next year, which actually allows the gates at each of the concourses to have the airlines share the gates so that the customers can have more room to sit inside of the hold rooms, they can have a better experience with relaxing and waiting before they hop on a plane. Right now, it's a little congested in there. The carpets look like they need 100% replacement. It's a little bit outdated when it comes down to the way, the look, the design. The design's great, but the look of it needs to have some new paint, some new colors, some new carpeting. So with this common use installation, we're going to be opening up the hold rooms, adding additional seating, and it's going to be a little bit different from your normal chair seating. We're going to try to put in some actual, like, nice mid-century modern couches and areas for our passengers to be able to work and actually plug in and utilize their phones for charging. And so there's a lot of different things that are going to happen within the hold room area, but it's going to definitely beautify and increase the customer and passenger experience.
Thank you. You've got $1 million devoted to landscaping. How much of that will involve turf removal to move to desertscape?
Yes, well, that was just a projected amount that we have. You may have seen, we are already starting kind of killing off the grass there in the airport. There are some areas that we've stopped watering on, so we're already starting to plan for that so that we can eventually put in the desert landscaping. Maybe you and other customers' residents have seen that we went and did a demonstration garden right at the main focal point of getting into the airport so that we could save on water from watering the grass, and we put in a lot of desert landscape there. So we're planning on doing the same thing at other areas around the airport where you see grass.
I applaud that. I would also suggest the earlier that we can make known to the public what our plans are in terms of turf removal to desertscape, that we get that out there to the public. There are an awful lot of folks that are very, very interested in seeing that happen. At the same time, we also have a number of folks who believe that grass is a part of the original design of the airport, and we want to be respectful of both, but clearly the need to be more water-wise is something that all of us believe in. Councilmember Kors?
Great, thank you, and thank you for those comments, and nice to meet you, and thanks for your work. So two things. One, so as, you know, you talked about some of the beautification things, and I know we're going out to bid for new concessions, so is that going to be coordinated, so look and feel, you know, work together with some of these?
Absolutely.
Okay. And the only other question is, I know for several, for years, there's been discussion, I know the Airport Commission, I've heard from some of them, you know, just wanted us to start looking at what would be needed to have customs. I think, you know, there's particular interest in flights with Mexico, both for tourism but for a number of people with family and friends. So I know that's not in here, but, and I know it's a long process, I just wondered if there's any plan to start the process at all, right? Because until we start it, I know we tend to put some things off because it's such a long process, so I'm just wondering what the thinking or discussions or current update is on that.
Yeah, absolutely, good question. To do the planning process for that, I believe you will see on the PowerPoint, I want to say it is Item 4B, the Master Plan and GIA Implementation Phase 1. So with that Master Plan, it's going to help us identify ideal locations of where and what our future plans are. So that is something that is in our future plans. So it'll help us also identify facility needs and how we can utilize the airport property. So we are looking into that already, and we are already kind of future planning ahead for that.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Other questions or comments? Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Victoria. I've heard great things, so I appreciate the work that you're doing over there, and I appreciate the previous comments from the Mayor and Councilmember Kors. Just Item Number 5, baggage claim redesign, and then 14, I take it they follow each other. One is the design and two is the construction? Or one, excuse me, Number 5 is the design, and then 14 would be the construction of it?
Yes, that's correct.
And how does that work with Number 11, the consolidated car rental facility design?
Yes, absolute question. So when we go through the Master Plan, that is absolutely one thing that we're going to consider, like the location of our consolidated rental car facility. We are already in discussions with our rental car facilities in regards to potentially relocating them to a temporary spot until we build out the ConRack. So we're kind of already starting that design and, or that discussion of it. The ConRack is contingent on the airfield design, and we want to get it right.
Great, no, I agree. I think it's congested there right now. I think what that Master Plan looks like is of the utmost importance because we have an identity to our airport that people love. The little dark, the kids' play area, the dog park, and everything that we've got there is fantastic, and I've gotten great compliments on that, thank you. But I think the overall design, so it doesn't look piecemeal, is cohesive in its scope, so having an overall design before doing it, I think is excellent in doing that. In regards to bringing in, you know, the customs that's needed for more flights, I think that I would say is, our incentive program should be an incentive program also on the type of jets that they bring in. We have an enormous amount of residents who live underneath the flight path, both on the arrival and the departure end of it, and ensuring that we can bring in and mitigate any noise is efficiently impossible while potentially increasing the carrier capacity would be of the utmost importance to me. So I just ask you to keep that in mind in doing that. But other words, I do think that this is great, and thank you for your work.
Okay, we will be sure to take a look at that.
Councilmember Holstich?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just have a few questions about projects that are listed that are proposed for future years. So the first is Number 17, HVAC efficiency upgrades. If you could please explain more about that. And then also Number 23, terminal improvements, carpet replacement, and 24, ADA compliance renovation. If you could just detail those and why they weren't selected to be funded now.
Yeah, absolutely. So the HVAC efficiency upgrades, that one is so that we can replace some old equipment that we think eventually is going to fail us. So prior to that happening, we want to make sure that we are planning for that. But it's also previous, that was a previous project that was contingent on facilities. So that is one thing that we have, you know, projected for our future. So that is one thing that we have, you know, projected for our future, our future projects. And then the terminal improvements, carpet replacement. So there's different areas of the terminal that would potentially need those carpet replacements. And in one case, one is adjacent to the baggage claim. Then there's other carpet areas that's leading up to that baggage claim area. So we just want to make sure that we're getting it piece by piece and also putting in the same type of carpet all around the airport as much as we can. So it's just a continuous, ongoing thing that we'll need to replace, especially as it gets dirty or if it's reached its useful life.
Thank you. And then the ADA compliance renovation.
Oh, yes, sorry about that. So as we do projects, like for instance, when we're going through our bathroom improvements, we're definitely going to focus on some ADA compliance. But we will fund that year over year as well in our operating budget as well. So we just wanted to point it out that that is something that we're going to be continuous on and be mindful of whenever we're doing projects.
Okay, that's helpful. And so for the, both, for all three of those, do you have dates listed about when they're expected to need to be completed or when they'll be considered? I noticed that I'm asking this, one, because the air conditioning is frequently out in the terminal when I fly in and out, and I ask the workers there and the flight attendants, and they say it's frequently out. And then the carpet replacement, we got very behind on maintenance, and it was very, very stained throughout the terminal. And then ADA obviously raised that that's just constant. But, so I just flagged those as maybe urgent needs, and I know we got behind. So I'm wondering what the planning is to make sure that we always have beautiful carpet and working AC and all of those maintenance needs.
Absolutely. Those are great concerns. So we definitely have to have the staff to help us address some of those items. So we had projected out the HVAC efficiency upgrades during fiscal year '23, '24. And then as far as the other terminal improvements, we are trying, we, council recently approved a contract with a vendor to help us with cleaning the airport, and we have received positive feedback, especially from like online and social media, that people have noticed a difference in the cleanliness of our facility. So while the carpet replacement isn't projected to until fiscal year '25, '26, we do, we are focusing on that. We are focusing on the carpets and keeping it clean. We definitely want to have a clean airport for our passengers. And the ADA compliance, that is also something that we have projected out in '25, '26. However, are also considering that as we go through projects and as you, operation and maintenance of, and improvements around the facility throughout the years. So a lot of projects may be pulled forward as we get more people and identify the capacity to do them.
Thank you. And I raised this before, I just think this is very much the time to invest in our airport as we're seeing higher and higher passenger levels, and I think that we need to retain those passengers. And I'm concerned that the way that we've fallen behind on capital improvement, you know, gives a lesser passenger experience than we might be able to because of the funds available. So, yeah, appreciate your work on this and appreciate staff kind of analyzing if this is the best way to do it, or if there are other things we need to bring forward or fund every year, or other ways to keep the maintenance up so we don't get so far behind. Thank you.
Other, Councilmember Woods?
I just wanted to do a follow-up really quickly. The car rental facility design is at $2 million. It's my understanding we had gone through this in the past. Has that work been thrown out, or are we redoing it, or are we amending it?
We need to go back and take a look at it and just make sure that that's still the plan that we want to move forward with. If there's any updates that need to happen with it, we gave ourselves a little bit of a cushion there with expenditures. It may not be that much, and you are correct, there is some, some design components, but I don't think it got that far in design. There was a lot of work that was done that isn't consistent with the current operation of our environment now. So we need to take that again.
Okay. And as far as the baggage handling, the baggage claim design, you know, we've just upgraded our baggage handling, our behind-the-scenes, and how does that integrate with that?
They're kind of two separate projects, they're two separate locations, but ideally function the same way. The baggage handling system is taking the bags to the plane versus the baggage claim system is dropping the bags off after our passengers have a ride to Palm Springs Airport. So it's a little bit different. It's more of like a carousel versus like a conveyor belt system. But ideally, the same thing, we just, it's something that needs to be designed, inspected out, and even look at future growth and incorporate that into the design.
Great, thank you.
So if there are no more questions or comments, do we have consensus and approval to move forward on this? All right. Then I think that's what we needed to provide in the way of direction. Victoria, thank you so much for your work and for everyone else's work at the airport.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Madam Mayor and council, I think we're ready to move on to the general fund and capital fund if you're ready and there are no other questions.
Okay.
So I'd ask PSTV to put up the original PowerPoint. Okay. So we do have two separate lists for you included in the staff report that really do segregate the projects or programs identified to be included in the general fund versus the capital fund. But there was some conversation in previous sessions about the interplay between those. So for at least this one slide, I just want to focus on what I think are your three available buckets of funding. And they're all a little different, both in terms of, you know, where they come from, how they work, and they tie a little differently to the city manager recommendations and whatever is left that's available. So the first is the general fund available fund balance. So those are accumulated dollars, revenues over expenses from previous years, as I know you understand, but to make sure the community watching also understands. So those are generally one-time dollars available for one-time uses. What we project for available revenue over expenses, so what we do is, you know, we forecast revenues and then we estimate expenses that include some nominal increases, right? So labor costs increase as we approve new MOUs with our bargaining units, fuel prices increase, supplies sometimes, you know, during periods of inflation, et cetera. But before we start to add new expenses, that nets out at an available $7.5 million in revenue. So I know there was, the way this was covered in the press the first time I presented maybe created an incomplete perception of where we are. The good news is, after accounting for those increases in costs that I just described, there is still some money left. And that money enables the city to invest in services, and that's very positive. And the growth in the budget overall is substantial, but again, 7.5 left after, you know, the increases to the base budget, in the context of our general fund, is about 5%. It's not a huge windfall of money, and it's not enough to cover all of the things we'd like to invest in. So while this is a good thing that we're talking about where we can invest additional dollars rather than needing to cut, it is not at all the case that there's just so much money that, you know, we could do all kinds of things, as we'll see in a minute when we start to look at the list. And then lastly, with the capital fund, you have about $62 million a year. It's actually about 65, but some of that is pledged to debt service. So what comes out in the end is about 62. Bear in mind that council just gave direction to use $2 million that is transferred from the general fund to capital to potentially cover the one-time cost of, a portion of the cost for police radios. So just for one year, that amount might be $2 million less. But generally speaking, in all future years, these funds can generally flow from the general fund to the capital, but not vice versa. So when you have accumulated fund balance, you could spend $0 to $45 million to enhance the available funding in the capital fund. And on an ongoing basis, you could spend an additional 7.5 on top of the two that you generally already commit, next year being potentially an exception. So that's really the flexibility that you have to enhance the capital funding. I also want to point out that the capital fund is comprised of numerous sources, the most significant of which is really measure J for a stable, ongoing source of revenue. But in the staff report, we outlined a number of other sources like measure A that contribute to those available funds. Almost half comes from grants. Those grants can be pretty substantial when you have things like major bridge projects and even dog parks and libraries, you know. I think we have the potential to get as much as half of our funding from grants. But the total available amount certainly can fluctuate year to year depending on the types of projects that we have contemplated and how successful we are receiving grants. So that's probably, you know, a generally reliable number. We predict we'll have that certainly over the next five years of the CIP, but just the caveat there that it is subject to change. Any questions so far about the pots of money or how they relate to one another?
Just one clarification, those grants are usually restricted funds. Is that correct?
Yes, so the grants are generally pegged to a project. The good news is, we generally apply for the grant because we have a project in mind. So it's often supporting a priority versus being restricted in a way that ties our hands, you know.
All right. And when you say general fund available balance of $44 million, almost 45, that money is currently in reserve, or where is that money?
That's correct. So that's found in the fund balance. So just to make sure it's clear, what we do is we forecast the revenues, look at the budget, and then decide, you know, what is a reasonable fund balance. This budget currently is built on a 20% reserve, but we build that reserve by looking at ongoing operating expenses. In other words, we back out some of the large grants that are in the general fund because you don't really need a reserve for grant dollars. So if you were to look at it as a percentage of the total budget, it may be a little closer to 15. So it's in that 15% to 20% window, which is reasonably conservative, especially as we're seeing signs that the economy may not be as strong in future years as it is now. And of course, council's discretion, if you wanted to increase that measure of protection found in the reserve balance, we also do have the CalPERS set aside that is separate. So when I say a 20% reserve balance, that's 20% based on projected ongoing expenses, which is approximately $150 million in total expenses, so a $30 million reserve balance, give or take pending on council direction.
Questions, comments for city manager?
Is CalPERS, what is, it's, how much is, 20% for the reserve, and what is it for CalPERS?
So we are proposing that this year, like some previous years, that we set aside $6 million for the unfunded liability. That would bring the total set aside close to 30 million. We believe that is pretty close to taking care of the entire unfunded portion, but we're also proposing that we hire a consultant for relatively low cost, probably $10,000, $15,000, that will come back and refine that analysis and also present a handful of options to city council on how to approach the set aside. In other words, whether to sit on it, whether to actually pay down some of the liability, whether to invest the funds, or take other various approaches. But you, the city should not need to sustain $6 million long into the future on top of the, what we already contribute to CalPERS as a component of our payroll.
If I could, on CalPERS, I really support bringing that consultant in, and I believe we have some great opportunities to pay ahead our CalPERS obligations and realize some significant savings. But let's go through the analysis before we make any of those decisions.
I think 30, you know, that was to deal with the delta of the increases that were coming very rapidly. But just to clarify, 30 million isn't our total unfunded pension liabilities, right?
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I thought you might have said that, and that, like, our total unfunded pension and healthcare liabilities, do we know what that number is?
No, that's part what we're going to determine as we conduct this analysis, but recognizing that some of the pension formulas have changed, right? And as our workforce evolves, hopefully what we're collecting now for new employees is covered. So the unfunded portion, the set aside on top of that, is really what we need that set aside for. I think the goal, most likely, is to smooth out that number, right? What we probably want, pending confirmation from council, is to make level payments so that there's no balloon, there's no big surprise where all of a sudden you owe a lot and you haven't prepared. We think the 30 million that's set aside, depending on exactly how it works for us over that amortization period, will cover a decent amount of that unfunded liability that you won't need to keep putting in $6 million, say, for the next 10 years, maybe the next year or two, pending that analysis.
Right, okay. No, that's helpful. And just want to share just briefly, and I'll send the link to you, but on the California Mayor's Coalition, State Treasurer Fiona Ma sort of did a preview, and they have two live modules for elected officials and staff on CalPERS and pensions and options, and they're doing, I think, a series of six or seven. And I started watching the first one, which, you know, especially seven years ago, would have been so helpful because I couldn't have told you anything about them. So it's a good thing, and we should share it with council and, you know, appropriate staff as well, so I'll get you that. It just reminded me that I was going to tell you that.
That's great. Okay, we ready to move on? Okay. So the first thing, want to focus in on the general fund. Recall that you've got about $45 million in one time and 7.5 roughly in ongoing revenues over expenses. Again, that's subject to change depending on how the economy changes and how revenues shift. Just to make clear, when the city manager recommendations, especially for the ongoing costs that are primarily staffing, those come from a combination of council's priorities, listening to community concerns, and then occasionally there are things that staff may see that the community or council doesn't, right? A facility that we're familiar with that's, you know, in need of restoration, things like police radios that might not be evident to someone else. But most of these come from really hearing our residents talk about what they need, whether that's through their representatives, the city council, or literally firsthand when we're at stakeholder meetings, what have you. So if we hear that downtown is not as clean as it used to be, and then council says, we want to make sure we're investing to keep up with that, we go to the staff team and say, what does it take to do a better job maintaining the downtown? And then they come back and say, we'd like one additional crew so that we have a better seven-day-per-week operation and someone that can kind of move around the downtown and make sure we're keeping it clean. So I'm just pointing out that while there are these different sources of recommendations and we've segregated the lists, really, this is certainly a blending of all of the people in the community, our commissions, our council, and even what we call staff recommendations are really meant to reflect your priorities more than our ideas, right? So, and those recommendations right now, that when we went to staff and said, what is it going to take to meet some of these new priorities and these things we've talked about, came back with about $10 million in requests. So right off the bat, we had to cut that back to meet what we think is a reasonable available resources. So that proposes funding about 7.5 and not funding about 2.3 or 4, depending on exactly how you look at it. So that's the first way that your list is segregated. The city manager recommendations that we've presented to you previously, along with a kind of explanation. And then the second part of the list, to make sure you're aware, are the other requests that staff feel are needed at some point into the future. And then the third component of the list that we're going to look at are things that have come up in our budget discussions or in other ways. Primarily the budget, some were very specific suggestions from council members, and some were more like inquiries, like, you know, making sure we're accounting for future economic development costs. Or while we've added a staff member to our sustainability program, we haven't really programmed money for the climate action plan yet. So there really are a lot of costs to anticipate into the future. All of that added together leaves us at about a $10 million deficit, and some of the items don't have dollars associated with them yet, or these are broad placeholders. So just again, to put this in the context of abundance or scarcity, the good news is, we can invest, you know, seven and a half plus million dollars into services, but it is not enough to handle everything we'd like to do and that we think our residents need and deserve. So here's So here's the start of that list. Again, your two reference points, the numbers of available funding is at the top, roughly 45 in one time, 7.5 in ongoing. And then we get into the list. The exercise here is very similar to what we just went through. To the extent we have some consensus or majority on what is in and what is out, those things will be reflected in future budget conversations and budget adoption. Anything that needs more conversation, we defer until a later date. And again, if we make no decisions at all, it's okay. It just means that there would be an amount unallocated in the budget. So as far as we can get down this list, it will be reflected in the future budget documents, and whatever we don't get to, we'll bring back to you on the 16th. So perhaps a good place to start is, are there any questions with anything that is on this list? The CM recommendations, the items not recommended yet, or the items in yellow about other kinds of proposed ideas?
Mayor Procham.
Thank you. I have a question about the court attendants. It says there's two. Do we have court attendants now at all?
My understanding is no. That was something that, again, we had heard numerous kind of conflicts and things emerging and wanting to increase the level of service for some of our recreation programs, and thought that some court attendants, Jeanne can expound on this, would be helpful in increasing that level of service.
It would be helpful to know where they'll be or what their intended purpose will be.
This recommendation came from staff in the Recreation Department, and it was suggested that we create a roving, a couple of positions that would be roving park attendants that could go and check to make sure that the parks are being used as, for their intended purpose, and that permits are being issued accordingly and whatnot. And then for the courts, we had so much community input for pickleball and tennis that we suggested that this position would be helpful to be more attentive to the courts and be onsite, be able to help them. Now, we've heard some conflicting feedback from the community on whether they want this position or not, but we still believe that this would be a strong help to have, you know, people in the parks helping the residents and users of the parks.
Okay, thank you so much. Just another question for you. Actually, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update, can you just give us a little bit more information? Some of this stuff I know we've talked about, but it's hard to keep track of all the details.
I know, that has been a request, I believe, for a long time, to have a Parks Master Plan. I think the last one, the last draft I found was from 2008.
Okay, so this is based on the discussions that, for instance, that we were even having today?
Yes.
That contemplate that, okay. I just want to make sure I'm using the, looking at this properly. Okay, thank you. And then there's, were the expenses not recommended to be added? I saw there's a downtown maintenance worker, Justin. So is this not recommended because we have enough right now? I know that, for instance, the downtown park, people have been saying hasn't been kept up enough, but obviously we do have funding for two or more roaming parks people, so that might take care of that. Just want to make sure we have enough downtown people.
So when you look at the first list, the blue color, direct you to number 18 and 19, that does contemplate three to the downtown
Three.
Crew. What was requested was four. So as we were trying to balance this across the board, there were some instances where a request like that, we said, we really do feel like we need another crew, but maybe we'll have to get by with three instead of four, just to try to stretch the dollar and make sure we can invest in some of the other priorities.
Okay, thank you. And then for the other requests for expenses to be added, there's a lot on here. I know we gave you quite a bit. So I guess what I'm struggling with is kind of how we give you the, you know, because we have a, what, $10 million that's kind of available if we accepted staff recommendations and then wanted to do more, is that correct?
So when you look at the one-time bucket, the 45 million, and that's represented on the left-hand column of the two on this chart, about 35 is recommended to be spent, but that's really ideal for one time, but not ongoing, because those dollars accumulated in previous years but aren't expected to come in every year. So really, we have about $10 million with no recommendation for one-time things, but when you look at the numbers on the right, out of the 7.5, the CM recommendations total 7.1. So that only leaves a few hundred thousand dollars. This probably starts to get insight as to why we started looking at Measure J as a source for a project engineer, or even Measure J as a source for the police radios, because, you know, these dollars were starting to get scarcer and scarcer as we approached looking at these priorities.
Okay, and some of these, I mean, it does make sense, a lot of those in yellow are almost, all of them are ongoing, but I do wonder if there's an ability to move forward with some of these things. For instance, we've talked a lot about teen programs, we don't do a lot of that right now. Like, would we be able to put, set aside some one-time funds to get it started, see how it goes, maybe look for grants? Because I know there's a lot of grant money available specifically for violence prevention or workforce development with teens, and so I'm wondering if some one-time money can just get us started, and then maybe we can see where we go from there, or if, kind of how staff views things like that.
Yeah, so it does get a little complicated to start looking at the overall budget and assessing how aggressive is it, and how conservative is it, right? So where we build in some more conservative practices are places like the reserve balance or front-loading some of the funding for things like deferred maintenance. Most of those dollars won't be spent at once. Another good example, and it's a one-time source, but the $10 million for affordable housing, unlikely to be spent entirely in a year. And so if something happens over the course of next year, those funds can be used, they can be shifted to ongoing costs while we wait for the economy to recover. That gives you some flexibility, but the more you allocate ongoing money with the hope that the economy will grow or will come up with grants, it does create a little bit of exposure, and we already rely on some element of continuous growth to keep up with things like our multi-year MOUs where we've promised, you know, additional compensation and other things. So you could grow, your revenue sources could grow and not keep pace with some increases in cost, depending on the state of the economy, especially in periods of inflation, right? Where some of the standard materials might cost more than they did before. So the answer is yes, but within some reason. If we did a lot of that, and the 7.5 in ongoing became eight, nine, 10, and we didn't have a source identified, I'd start to probably caution council that, especially with a recession likely in the next two years, and already industry folks in the community saying things are a little different than the real banner year we just had, we just want to be careful.
Thank you. And Madam Mayor, I defer for the rest of the meeting since we don't have a lot of time.
All right. I know we are going to get short, and we've got a lot to cover. A couple of questions in two very different areas. First, just from a staffing standpoint, are there departments and programs that you are most concerned about that need to have an infusion of new staffing?
That's a really good question. When we look across the board, part of what we're doing, again, is assessing priorities from council's perspective in the community. And then there is a bit of an analysis saying, what is the gap, right? And so sometimes, big departments that already have a lot of resources nevertheless have a substantial gap. One of those that is not yet defined is the Police Department. The Police Department had some requests, some of those were put into the recommendations, some of those not, in part because we're about to undertake a department review and should be bringing you a scope of work soon, so that we can look at calls for service and decide, should they be traditional police officers, should they be different? So that's a big one, where depending on the level of service expectation, the department's involvement in homelessness and their initiatives to reduce crime could be substantial. The other things that I highlight are the areas where council has high priorities but very low capacity. Sustainability comes to mind, economic development comes to mind, and housing comes to mind. Those are three really big and potentially expensive programs where collectively we have two or three staff members. They don't need to be built out to be 20-person teams, but as you know, affordable housing can be expensive, and things like climate action, depending on how aggressive the city wants to be, can be expensive. So those are the areas that come to mind as still under capacity.
Right. And because it's top of mind for me, are you satisfied that the investment of three additional people for maintenance in the downtown area is sufficient?
I think it gives us a good start, considering that we're also investing in additional parks maintenance and additional streets maintenance and some of our facilities and fleet. So that in general, I think, will help raise the game a lot. It's really difficult to know if that will be enough. Some depends on whether the economy continues to grow and we continue to see more visitors, but we do think it will be a noticeable difference, because my understanding is that it enables us to be present every day of the week equally, opposed to having some gaps in the week.
That is accurate, City Manager. So having the extra three does give us the rotation that we can have seven days a week covered.
Very good. Okay. I want to jump into a different area. We've got $10 million set aside for potentially a transfer to affordable housing. What have we spent in the past in this area?
I had not done that analysis, so I will fully admit that the $10 million is meant to be a placeholder, understanding that council wants to, at least the ability to be more responsive to partnership opportunities. That number could be adjusted, and we could certainly do that analysis to look over the previous few years, but I haven't done that, I apologize.
And you've already mentioned that in terms of staffing, we have, how many people who are responsible for our housing initiatives?
Really zero. There was already allocated a position meant to be split between homeless services and housing. We're proposing each of those become full positions, but that would give one dedicated, and then lots of bits and pieces of planners and city managers and community development, but that's not a department.
So in normal times, I'd stretch this out to a half a dozen questions and take a little more time, but I'm going to cut to the chase. How in heaven's name would we propose to spend $10 million this year on programs that we've never done, that we don't have even a record that we've done anything before?
So the ideas for funding that wouldn't be resource-intensive would be things like purchasing lots that might be developed, especially larger ones that might be well-suited as gifts to nonprofits for leveraged projects like tax credits. And honestly, at today's prices, that could be two parcels and two projects, and the money would be gone.
Would it not be more appropriate for us to look at what would be a sustainable number over four or five years as opposed to a one-time infusion that we don't have the capacity to spend? And that's a judgment I'm offering, and I don't know where anyone else is going to be on that, but...
I'll just answer that if you have more other stuff.
Yeah, go for it.
But on that, I think just the two projects we did in the last year or so were like $8 million, $10 million to get the now ALO, it used to be Agave, and the one at DAP Health, plus $2 million in land to Chalk. But that was just in this year, and those three, as a result of that extra money, after not being able to get it, especially Chalk, got the federal tax dollars. So we're not running those programs at a staff level, but having, it would be very easy if we had $10 million to see, and we let nonprofits know we have that available, because they need that local match to get the federal and state funding. So without that there, it's not going to happen, right? So I think, you know, if we want to see 10 projects built over the next five years, we're going to need to probably put in almost that amount every year, right? I mean, if that's a real priority, which I think it is, we're going to, it's a lot, that local match is a really big piece of them, but that leverage, what, those three projects, $120 million in other money, right? So ours is a small part, but it's an important part.
Councilmember Horstich.
Thank you. I appreciate this discussion. It's really important, because we really just haven't had the funding to be able to meet our goals, especially for housing, without redevelopment. So I think it's bold, and I support putting away a significant amount for a housing fund since we've spent it over the last few years in significant amounts. There is a lot, I would just ask that we leverage all the state funding that is available, because so much is coming down from the state, but it does sometimes require a local match. So I think that's important to look at, like, how much will be the city's responsibility and how much, I mean, we should do this planning around our arena numbers, too. And then two, I had it twice, and it went away twice. It'll come back to me.
Well, it will, and will come back to you.
Thank you.
Anyone else want to jump in?
Oh, two, I got it.
Go, go, go!
I only slept three hours last night.
For sure.
And, I'm going to lose it again. Looking at a revenue source for our housing fund. So I know the council's talked about doing impact studies or studying, you know, how to use a portion of TOT to go directly into the fund, because without a revenue source, we're going to just have to keep building this, taking away from other community services, I mean, to be honest. So I would like to see us at least, and I think we're bringing that forward, analyzing some revenue source, like if it's a portion of TOT or other type of measure of revenue or just a set aside like this, but I think that's smart to do. Thank you. Sorry, it took so long.
Okay. I have some on other things, but not that, so if you were still on your list.
Just to close the circle on this, I hear you. I want us to take and make commitments in this area. I am going to really struggle to agree to 10, but I may not be in the majority on that, Councilmember Corr.
Go through just my stuff quick. Just on the court attendants, those are budgeted, I think, in '17, '18, and '18, '19, or two of the years, and just never happened. And part of it was, and then, you know, during COVID, we sort of computerized or had a system for people to actually reserve courts, part of it, you know, not everyone, and people who are working, you know, they maybe have an hour they can play. And there were some issues at Ruth Hardy that got pretty intense with people who sort of felt they had the courts in season from 8:00 to 11:00, and no one else could play. I know they didn't want a court attendant when that happened, but there are a lot of other people who felt, and to be able to set up, you know, one person who plays tennis but doesn't really, you know, moved here or know others, so to help facilitate some of that. And then I think Parks and Rec also wanted that position to make sure the courts were clean, the lights were working, that kind of stuff. So that's just the history I just wanted to share. I mean, one thing that's, I don't even think that's on here, I guess it's in the yellow, is, you know, an extra communication staff person, right? Which we talked about, because it's a great example, we talked about with Measure J. There's so much amazing work. Every time I want to call, whether it's, right, with the GM breakfast or any of the business groups, and I hear from staff, and just amazed at all the great work that's happening, that we don't get into the weeds on, so we don't always know. But if we don't know it, the public doesn't know it. So I just wanted to raise the importance of that, I think, for the community and to know things in that piece. You know, the problem is, and I appreciate that you had to say no to some stuff that ideally we do in the green, but there's a lot in the yellow. We know, after the study, there's going to be additional police staffing that's going to happen annually. We just know that's going to happen, and if we don't set that aside now, and especially if there's a recession, and, you know, hearing from some of the businesses that, you know, May, June, July are not looking like they did the last two years for businesses and hotels, and, you know, those huge jumps, right? We might hopefully just flatter the little increases, and you're being conservative, but they could go the other way. So, you know, you see that, I mean, some of the big numbers, right, climate action numbers, affordable housing staff, which, you know, can be somewhat offset by being able to put out and say, we have money and land available, and let the nonprofit housing developers, affordable housing developers do that work. You know, the rec, you know, youth and teen programs, you know, some of them are smaller numbers. They're all important, and that's where it's a challenge, right? But I do think, you know, we're adding some to police now, a lot more to fire now, but we know after that study, that's where we're short, right? Our city is not the city that we're staffed at currently in that department, and I think there's going to be a really thoughtful look at how you, what the best staffing is to deal with some of the issues, including staffing is to deal with some of the issues, including homelessness and mental health as well as crime. So I just want to make sure, you know, we have to do that, and I don't know if we have to cut other areas to do that, but we know that's coming. And, you know, then we get that study back in six months and it's like, well, we, you know, we don't have the money. So I'm not, I don't know the answer for where it comes from right now, and I think that's a longer conversation that we could do in 12 minutes, but that's what really jumped out to me, some of those, some of those areas, and especially in the sort of police area.
So we've got about 12, 15 minutes left. I want to make sure that we give each one of us an opportunity to hit our most important issues and conversations before we close down. Councilmember Woods.
I'll make it quick. I support 17, an engineering project manager, I think, with the amount of the city manager said that we have, are doing, the new project, Measure J. People want to see it kind of quicker rather than later. That's really important. I'm questioning project, or number 30. You can come back with more information, the fiber optic master plan. You know, C-VAG, as I, I'll have an update at one of our meetings, is putting in kind of a middle mile. I don't know if that's last mile, what it is, what it looks like, where it fits into that, but I'd like a little more information. It's not that much money, but then we have to have money to implement it. I think, you know, you talked about it earlier, number 37, additional cowpores reserves. I don't think it should be blank, and maybe we're waiting for that study, but there should be a placeholder of some money for ongoing. Am I wrong on that?
So there's $3 million that's already been allocated, and this contemplates another three. And again, that's in addition to our existing PERS liability. So, and I don't think that's going to be ongoing at that level for, you know, a long, long time, but we'll need that review to confirm that.
We'll need some amount in there, I would assume.
That's right.
So just leaving it as zero doesn't give us a true budget, I don't think, so we can guestimate of that. I just didn't know, we can get more information on the security services at the three rec centers? I don't know what it's needed or why it's needed or just kind of better information. I just want to know why we're not funding firefighters or whatever the reason that is. You can come back. I don't need it now. Police behavioral specialist, you know, I know we have, I think we have three people now that deal with homelessness, right? And I don't know if this is also to deal with homelessness on top of that.
I do believe the goal was to utilize some other resources that might be better equipped to deal with some of the issues that are frequent that involve mental health.
Okay, and maybe that comes out of the number 69, the additional police services pending the study and what that looks like. Do we need, you know, sworn officers or can we do it some other way? I believe a digital communication manager might be a good thing. We can look at that especially so we don't have each of the own commissions doing their own kind of thing and they're not coordinated. However, we do that communications department or the PIO department, I think is important to look at and what that means. And I support number 61. We have been, for over two years, doing a general plan update. We continue to do greenfield developments. We continue to kind of expand and grow without really being coordinated enough to really know what the long-term vision is with smart cities and, you know, all the new things that we're talking about, walking to grocery stores and all of that. So I think that position might be, might be important. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Hossich.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll just raise in a list like that. I also had questions about 13 and 14, the park attendant, park ranger, and court attendant, and if we might just think of, you know, having general park attendants and having them rotate or seeing what the need is, but that's up to staff recommendation. I'd just like more information. Also heard from community members asking about a local hire program or something like that for those positions because people need those jobs. I had also flagged the maintenance workers and street maintenance workers, both getting requests that those be hired locally and then, you know, if that's sufficient. I'm going to make sure I'm comprehensive here. I agree with the questions about the fiber master plan. Support everything else that's included. I also had raised the firefighters and the difference between the six and the nine. I saw the explanation in the staff report. That was really helpful, so if we could just have a further discussion about that together at the next meeting and hear from the chief and you as a city manager. I had also flagged the literacy coordinator. I think that there are some really minimal investments that we can make that are so worth the payoff. And so for me, I have circled a lot of things on this yellow list, too. Literacy coordinator, making that full-time. I did note in the staff report, it looked like there is a fee-based preschool program, and I wanted information about that. Obviously, I had asked at a previous city council meeting if we can really think more progressively about how we provide services to our community and not charge, not have so many things be fee-based because there is such a need in the community and we have a lot of people, you know, cost of formula is so much and it's, you know, it's nice to provide free services when we can. I've circled guaranteed income pilot program. I'd like to have that conversation with the council. You know, I had circled student internship program, waiving fees for nonprofits, $25,000, but think as an investment from us, but think about the benefit generated from the community doing work in our city, which they don't currently do, I think is worth the investment. Other things I heard from the community is the diversity manager, sustainability associate, climate action plan. I very much would also like to discuss the capital campaign contribution for DAP Health and teen programs I had circled as well. 74, support regional housing fund through C-VAG. I know the city manager discussed with Greg Rodriguez, who works for C-VAG, for Housing First, and our housing work, homelessness work, but is going to go to the county and work there full-time, leading the homelessness efforts. And they, with Liftarizer, are doing a regional housing fund. And so I'm wondering if we can think through if it's $10 million or $5 million or whatever the amount is for housing, a way that we can set some of that into that fund, which is a loan loss reserve to fund other housing. Because we're sitting on cash, frankly, that could be used to invest in housing projects moving forward. I think that's it. Obviously, there's Section 14 reparations here that's just left blank. That's a conversation that council's had that we haven't settled on an amount, but to leave it blank leaves not a lot of room there for those conversations. So really appreciate, I'll say, the city manager for jumping in and being, you know, a year into the job, and I know this was a hard budget, and I think that you did a really good job and all of staff on looking for efficiencies and way to improve services. So thank you for excellent, excellent work.
Mayor Protem.
Thank you. I know, I said I wasn't going to say anything else. One of the things, too, that I was looking at is just, we do have a lot of park maintenance positions, and one thing I was just curious about is just more information about why we anticipate the number of them that we have. Because I know that obviously we've raised this many to Christina, I've raised it many times, the need for it, but I want to make sure I understand what they're going to do because we have a bunch of different parks positions, and I just am not exactly sure what each of those roles will be. So if we can get more clarification, I think that could help us as well.
We can do that. And a quick note is, part of that number is taking over some work that is currently contracted.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Where we think we can kind of take a different level of ownership and pride and presence in some of those areas.
Great. Thank you so much.
So I think that gets it to me. Yes, you can.
No, I just, I just want to add to Mayor Protem's idea. You know, the Parks and Recreation Plan, excuse me, the Park and Recreation Master Plan Update, that could not only be facilities, but it could be programs so that we can look at what the needs are for the program because that leads to what facilities are, right? And I think the two are very combined, so I just wanted to follow up on that.
So let me give you some of my themes. One, we've already talked about Parks and Recreation Master Plan. I think that's really important and needs to be prioritized. I don't see it specifically in here, but I'm very concerned about expanding the programs that we have for at-risk youth and creating opportunities particularly for mentorships, for training programs, and for opportunities to work in various city departments and places. We've made a significant investment in homelessness over the last year, and I think we need to continue to double down on that investment and make sure that we get this issue resolved and resolved correctly. There's a million things we would like to do. Until we get homelessness addressed and truly resolved, we're not going to be able to get to any of the other issues in terms of things that the community wants. Police funding is going to be much more than three new officers, and I don't know what that number will be, but it's going to be significantly more than that. Where we can add staffing that is going to have a direct customer service result is places where I'd like to see us emphasize our additional staffing. At some point in the next few years, I don't believe we can do it in one year. I think it would be a good thing for our city to get two fire trucks that have four firefighters to a truck, but that's a long-term, not a short-term result. I prefer that we spend four to five years to get to $10 million in funding for additional affordable housing, but that's my view. Last thing, we're adding an awful lot of staff. That's a major investment. We've got to make sure that we have the reserves in place so that if the economy does turn south, which it may very well, that we're not facing a decision like we had two years ago where we had to cut staff. We've got to make sure we have enough money in reserve so that we can hold out for two or three years of recession if that's what happens. I don't believe that's a 20% reserve. It is something substantially north of that.
Counsel, this is very helpful. If I might, just to set up what will happen from here, we will endeavor to provide some information, probably similar to what we did in attachment to, to this staff report, and maybe just expanding that to provide some context for some of what we've heard. A good way perhaps to look at the challenge at hand in terms of deciding what's in, what's out, and what needs further discussion, is the items in blue really spend the available excess revenues over expenses projected for next year, or nearly all of it. So anything we do outside of the area in blue, if it's an addition, there's probably some reconciliation that needs to happen. So, you know, anything that's in green, anything that's in yellow, or anything that was mentioned that's not on the list that becomes funded probably needs to come out of somewhere, right? That's not to assume the things in blue are more important, it just happens to be roughly equal. The blue area is 7.1, our available resources is 7.5 million. So that, if it's helpful, staff could go back and look at some of these proposed expenses and identify the areas where we would propose scaling back in order to make space for whatever it is council may want, whether that's a higher reserve balance or some of these other funding opportunities. Or if you would prefer to do that work yourself during the next budget session, then we won't provide that analysis. Up to you.
Starting with your recommendations is always helpful. Councilmember Kors.
One thing I would note if we, which I think we did, if we're going to take $2 million that we're not going to transfer for capital, it sort of reduces the radios, right, number, and we had a million for Measure J. So just, that doesn't help us in the issue we're really dealing with. It's sort of one-time funding, but it gives us a little more room there for things that will come up because they always do.
Absolutely, and we'll massage those numbers a little bit based on decisions you've already made like that one so that you get a refined picture of what's available.
Right. No, I think you having those, here are ways we could scale back on some things that we think are doable, like, what were the first things you scaled back so we're making informed decisions, right? And then, you know, we talked about the money on the capital side for parks as well that we previously allocated, so, which would eat up, you know, the money we just...
$1 million, right.
Yeah, you know, so, just so we have that, you know, to make sure we're talking about that.
I will try to set us up for probably more like two hours instead of an hour on the 16th so that we can really do some of this work and the capital fund work. And again, however far we get, we'll lock that in for the 30th, most likely, so we can have a hearing and adopt a budget. And then every decision that's not made at that point, we'll be having conversations throughout the year.
And is the general fund, given it's staffing and other things, one we need to probably land on sooner than the capital?
Certainly anything that ends up in the budget in terms of personnel, we may be able to move forward with recruitments, whereas the capital, there's almost no chance that money is spent right away. So yes, I think that's one of the reasons we start with this fund and then with the time left, we move to capital, where it's more likely to be general direction rather than very specific, some things in or some things out. So that is the focus. So to the extent that council members also want to do some of that work between now and next meeting to identify things that you might trade within these lists or any other way you might look at it, to identify things we could scale back to create opportunities to scale other things up, that would facilitate the conversation.
Is there anything else for today? Councilmember Woods.
One final question. I think I heard from myself and from others that the Public Affairs, Digital Communications Manager might be an important position, but we also have number seven, which is the branding and marketing discretionary thing, and number 15, and I'm wondering if they couldn't do that. That's $200,000, and most of it's advertising and whatnot, but if that can't be done through a new position here versus outside, you know, because that would pay for the number 50, and we'd have extra to do outside advertising.
The only caveat there is some of the left-hand column is really, should be one-time and the other ongoing. So some of the branding, one of the reasons it was easier to build that in is because we had a larger bucket of available one-time money than we have a bucket for ongoing money. But we will look at how we might massage those things.
All right. Do we have anything else for this evening? Councilmember Hossich.
Thank you. Just heard the public who called in about playgrounds and parks. We've talked about it in general. So we're still going to do the capital improvement plan next at our next meeting, you said, right? So we'll have more information and a discussion then.
Yes, and again, to the extent that council members are already invested in looking at that list and identifying areas where you'd like to see more, it would be helpful to identify some areas where we might be able to do less so that we can balance that. But that's another area that staff could probably come up with some areas that we think would be the easiest to cut back to create space to have additional investments and things like parks.
Thank you. So for that, that would be helpful, having an attachment explaining some of those projects because we don't have a ton of detail on them right here. I know it's in the plan overall, but some of these we funded in the past and they were deferred, right? Some of them weren't, so some of them are brand-new to me. I don't know what skiling railings mean, right? So that level of detail and that way we can, because I completely agree with the public comments that our playgrounds are in such terrible shape and there's just holes in them where there should be water features and things like that. So yeah, I would love to talk about that more in depth at the next meeting for any of the members of the public who are interested in that. Thank you.
And one other question about the future meeting. I see Measure J decided not to fund the Rainmaker Fountain, which I think is in disrepair right now. Is that going to come back as something funded elsewhere?
I'll be happy to look into that, too.
Okay, thanks.
So with that, I think we are ready to adjourn, and the next regular city council meeting will be held on June 16, 2022. We are adjourned. Everybody be safe out there, and our congratulations to our friend and colleague, well, we'll just say Councilmember Hossich for now. Horsuch for now.